Is trustee Essex, excuse me?
Um, he's just not here yet, I think.
Gibbs?
Here.
Laird?
Here.
Montemayor?
Here.
Roberson?
Here.
Sparhawk?
Here.
Mayor?
Here.
You have a call.
Okay, thank you. Next item is the consent agenda, which consists of approval of a whole bunch of minutes. Hopefully we'll be caught up there soon and just one at a time. A hotel and restaurant liquor license renewal for La Raza. Sopra Sun special event permit application, transfer of ownership for the liquor license at Pepino's, Crystal River Restoration Project sign contract, Bike Ped Trails member appointments, and accounts payable. Any questions or items to pull for further discussion?
Um, yeah, I guess there's just some misspellings of trustee Laird's name in a lot of the minutes. I don't know if he cares or...
Okay. Maybe.
I only caught, I only went really going through today and it's, it's very, it's prevalent throughout, so.
Must be on audit correct.
I think it's just like a, yeah, like it's, it looks kind of the same too, so.
A question related to these minutes and other minutes, or at the end of our packet, there's all these minutes from other committees, and there were some inaccuracies in those. How do we suggest changes? Well, specifically, it was about the heating system at the Launchpad, but instead of saying Launchpad, they said Third Street Center. That's not true, so.
Do we have a process for if a trustee notices something that might be inaccurate in a border commission minutes? Because we don't approve those, they approve those. I'm gonna get those.
We can get that fixed. I will take a look at that.
There was the E-Board, E-Board meetings.
Thank you.
That's in this packet.
Great. I'm glad to hear people are reading all these minutes.
Um, yeah, I guess I would just say a little commentary on that. I just think personally I would appreciate it if they were, you know, delivered to us more sooner. Having like six months of them all arrive at once is a lot to go through and to remember back that far, so I just would appreciate if we could try to get to a little bit timelier delivery of those.
Jessica had gotten very far behind. Patrick is catching up quickly, and hopefully within the next two minutes, we will be back to one, one first.
Great, yeah.
Just so you know.
Yeah, yeah, I assume most of it is, yeah, you're brand new, so I'm not, no, I don't want to criticize you or anything, but just, yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Chris. I think we all share that sentiment. We'd like them to be current so that we can remember the meeting and not be overwhelmed by them, but I know Patrick's working on that. Okay, anything else on the consent agenda? And I would entertain a motion.
I'd move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Motion by Erica, second by Jess. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstain? Uh, next item is public comment. Anybody have public comment for things not on our agenda? We will allow public comment on the two items tonight as we discuss them, the Special Event Task Force and the Mobility Access Plan. So if you have comment on something else, or if you want to comment on one of those now so you can leave the meeting, now's your chance. Anybody in the room? Anybody online? Oh, go ahead. Approach the stand there and please state your name really clearly so that our clerk can capture it for the record. Tell us generally where you live. Carbondale is close enough. And you have about three minutes and address your comments to me, please.
Good evening. I should be really short.
Okay.
My name is Gordon Banks, and I live at 414 Jewels Drive in Carbondale. And my only comment is, is that I found out that next month, uh, our trash service is changing, and that's good for most of the people where I live, but I don't have trash service. And I found out that I would be paying for trash service even if I don't want it. So my petition is just to be, get an exemption or something so I could continue not having trash service. I don't have bins. I don't have much trash. If I ha, I use composting. Uh, if I have a little bit of trash, I walk across the street and put it in my mother's bin. And that's all I have. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Any other members of the public that would wish to comment tonight? We don't generally get into a back and forth right now. We might address it during our comments in a few minutes.
Do I need to stay then, or do you consider it yourself, or? I have nothing else more to say, so.
Yeah, I mean, you, you can talk to staff about exemptions, but we built a system that just doesn't have exemptions, so we're not gonna sit there and debate that right now.
There's, I can't get one.
No.
Got it. All right, thanks for your consideration.
Thank you. Um, anybody else here that would wish to comment tonight? Okay, anybody online? Okay. Uh, moving on then, trustee comments. Who wants to start? Anybody have comments this evening? Colin?
Um, just to let everybody know, I'll be going to the cast staff, uh, the cast meeting in Breckenridge on Thursday. Uh, and, uh, I'll be on the panel talking about geothermal, uh, in the morning.
Great. Anyone else? Erica, anything?
Um, I, well, kind of commentary. I was just in Washington DC for about five days, and it was pretty cool to be able to, uh, walk everywhere. Um, and use a train to get to the airport, you know, which had a shuttle. And I know that that's prevalent on the East Coast. We don't have it here, but it was just really easy and it was cool to be there with my kids and for them to kind of see that. So it's, as we are talking about mobility, it's just cool to see other places and how they've been doing it for a really long time. So that was, uh, enjoyable, um, as part of that trip. And then, um, another kind of commentary is just, uh, having a federal employee in my household. I just want to kind of give a shout out to all the federal employees who keep our Forest Service running and our Bureau of Land Management and all the other agencies that, um, I think are doing really important work. I really hope that you stick it out and stay in your job, because we value you, and I just really feel like that's a strong message to come from. We value our public lands. And, um, I don't want them understaffed, and I don't want them not staffed at all. So, uh, for anybody who has a, uh, who's listening in the audience, who's connected to a federal employee, um, I know it's really tough right now and a lot of demoralizing memos being sent your way. And I hear you, I see you, and I want you to stay in our community and stay in your job. That's really it.
Thanks, Erica. Let's just go around. Jess, anything?
Yeah, I just, uh, sort of commentary as well. Nothing, um, related to boards or anything. In light of the current federal administration's clear stance on border and immigration policy, I just want to say to the immigrants in our community, you're valued and important and appreciated.
Thanks, Jess. Christina, any comments tonight?
Yeah, I have two com, well, um, three. I, um, I went to the tourism meeting last week for the chamber, uh, the tourism, uh, Carbondale Tourism, and, um, we went over new board trustees and, um, our, um, past town trustee Lanny Kitchen, she's gonna be on the board. Um, and she brings the outdoor experience, so we're excited to, or the, um, out, yeah, outdoor rec experience, so we're excited to have her on the board. Um, we're getting into a strategic planning process in February for the Tourism, um, Council and, um, working on website. They have really cool data out on the Tourism Council, and they're working on getting, um, updated data and, and information out. So if you guys haven't seen the website, I would go to the website and look at that, and then it'll be upgrading in a couple of months, too. Um, my second, um, board is the Third Street Center and, um, just always highlighting some community events that they're having. I want to mention the Sopra Sun will be doing a photo essay for, um, the Third Street Center, February 6th, on their issue for February 6th. It's gonna be called "A Week at the Third Street", and it's basically shining a light on the importance of the building to the community, so I'm excited to see that. And then lastly, is anybody gonna do the February 20th, um, state meeting, the legislative meeting through CML? I was thinking of going, um, if anybody wants to join.
Where is that one?
It's in Denver, and they're gonna go over Colorado history. Um, and it's through CML. It's Annual Legislative Workshop, History of Colorado, um, Center Denver. So I'm interested in going. I have, uh, that date blocked out, so if anybody's interested, let me know when we could carpool.
What day is it?
February 20th.
Okay.
Another day of the week. Thursday.
Thanks, Christina.
Yeah.
Uh, Ross, any comments?
Um, I actually wasn't gonna have any comments, and then as I was flipping through some, uh, windows here on my screen, I realized I had pulled up this, the Building Code Open House on January 30th. And so I just wanted to let people know if they want to come and have questions. That's a great thing, and I, I appreciate that there have been, um, there's been advertisement of that either on Facebook or through emails. The, the, those advertisements direct us to Carbondale Connect, and it's really, um, there, there's really no way, there's, there may be fifteen or twenty documents, all revision one, seven, four, five, whatever. And if you had any concerns in particular, say you were thinking about an ADU, like what has changed? There, there would be no way without like serious knowledge of how to work your way through our code or our, our system to really get there. So at this point, I love the fact that we have Carbondale Connect. I love that this, this thing links to that. And, but I think, you know, just in terms of better communication, some way of, of summarizing some of those changes or something like that. Look at it, I mean, I like to always look at those things because I usually am, as someone who doesn't have, you know, particular expertise. And what would someone who just was thinking about an addition or a change or doing something with their space, like, what would they think if they went here? And I think in this case, it's sort of be kind of eyes glazing over. And so I, I encourage you to go look at, look at that and see what I'm, see what I'm talking about. But also just in, in the future, if we, whatever we can do to kind of help make these things boil down a little bit more, um, for, for our community, and, uh, and go from there. And I'm, yeah, uh, other than that, no other major comments today.
Okay, thanks, Ross. Chris?
Um, I'll just echo the comments of Erica and Jess, and also congratulations on, on your, on Malia's, uh, promotion as a page at the White House, or the Capitol, right, Senate?
The US Senate, yeah.
Sorry, getting my facts wrong. US Senate, yeah, that's really cool.
Thanks.
It's cool to see that, you know, in some ways, you doing your job has inspired her to do that, so.
This is so much like the US Senate.
Yeah.
But yeah.
We might be getting more done than they. Right. Uh, I think that's all I have to say. I guess I would just say I really like the website currently. I wouldn't reinvent the wheel at the Tourism Council unnecessarily.
Not local police officers here or anywhere else, so we're not standing in their way, but we're also not assisting them. We can discuss that more with our chief of police two weeks from tonight in our policing discussion. Um, and I encourage board members to reach out directly to our chief of police between now and then if you have other questions about that. Let's see. Also, I encourage board members with the code updates coming up that Ross mentioned. We have that scheduled for, um, probably late November. It might get moved to, uh, not November, February, late February, next month. Late February or early March, but it's on there right now for the 25th of February. For each of us to take the time to meet with Aaron before then, so that we don't come into that meeting really confused. So attend the open house if you can this Thursday, see what you can get answered there. But Aaron has offered to meet with all of us individually, and I don't think anybody's taken him up on that yet, so I think that'd be a good use of a few minutes. And then as far as CML events, Colorado Municipal League, I attended the Mayor's Summit in Denver this past Thursday, and that's, uh, I've done two of the three years that I've been in this role. Um, I've done that, and it's worth the drive, and it's just good to see. We're all facing similar challenges. I think that's all often the case when you get into a room at, um, Colorado Municipal League, is that you find that the things we're really struggling with are just kind of inherent to municipal government and small government and the different roles and relationships that we have to maintain and, and the inherent challenges in those. So it was a good event, and I just really appreciate CML's support and encourage everybody to attend some of those events when you can. The summit this summer will be in Breckenridge, and Chris and Lauren and I drove over to it two summers ago, and I'm gonna try to go again this year, so. Keep an eye out for that. That is all I have. Does anybody have any other comments before we move on? All right, attorneys' comments. Mark, anything tonight?
Just quickly, I'm over in Boulder, Denver this week, so saying hi remotely, and I second Erica's comments on Washington DC. I'm from there, and Erica, my son Rex is working on software for the Washington DC Metro system right now, which is really cool.
Very cool.
Awesome. Um, managers' comments, Lauren.
Well, you guys took most of my comments, but I can add a couple of things. Please do come out to the, to the open house. Basically, what Aaron's plan is, is we will have all of the code books and all of the, um, amended 2021 codes laid out on tables all over the room, and there'll be several people, not just Aaron, but, uh, J-Peth will be there. Heidi will be there from Clear. Couple of our, um, other consultants will be there, be able to ask questions, um, answer questions. So, um, Ross, there's no way, if you don't know what you're looking for, if you're not in the building trade, that you're gonna really understand the building codes without just sitting down and reading them. Things like ADUs, first place to go for that is the UDC to say, you know, what's allowed if you're thinking about doing something to your property. The, um, building codes are more about the technical things that are needed for life safety, et cetera, um, and energy, energy conservation requirements. So, um, but please do come and talk to Aaron. He's absolutely happy to talk to everyone, and he wants people to understand it. Um, and we're trying to make it. It's a very complicated process to get there, but we're trying to make it not only much simpler than it is now, but also much more in line with what our neighbors are doing.
I... Can I ask a que, I don't, can I ask a, I don't know if this is the proper form. Just a question, like, in that, in that situation, is there, and, and maybe Jess would have more of a, you know, coming from your background, like, would it be helpful to have like, and certainly as Aaron has gone through those things, there are, there are things that are bigger changes than others. Like, is, is there, is there a way to like hit the top, hit the, hit the biggest changes so that, so that someone doesn't have to peel through? I mean, it seems like there should be something between not reading anything and having to go through everything to find some of the big, big needy changes. And I think I would certainly like to know some of the ones that are gonna affect people the most.
Did you try to go through the documents?
I did. I, I put, I sort of picked and picked my way through.
There's a lot of the, the big red line sections are some of the big
Okay.
bigger changes. There was a, I don't remember when it was, there was a, um, a meeting where Aaron first came and talked about the major things that we're looking at and that were changed between the older code and this code, and then there will be, when you get your memo for the adoption, we're trying to get that out very early with the codes so that you have plenty of time to really look at it.
I mean, if, yeah, I mean, whatever elements of that that could be ready for the, for the, the open house, I imagine would be great. Anything that's boiled down a little bit, I think would be, would be a really good idea.
Um.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Okay.
Resolution 10, I put it in front of you so that you had it in hard copy. I wanted to give you the signed one, but it didn't print very well, so I figured I'd give you this one, which was the one that was approved. And that's really all I have, because the other thing was just about catching up on the minutes. Okay, so, thank you.
Thank you. Well, that gets us right into action items. First action item this evening is the Special Event Task Force 2025 Recommendations for Special Events and Street Closures. Eric?
I'm, yeah, hold on. All right, so the, uh, Special Event Task Force has been in existence since, uh, 2013. So it's been a, a great process that we go through every year. We really look at, um, and have the ability to look at last year's events in hindsight and have, um, it's a public open meeting, a pu, open forum for people just to give us feedback on those events. If there's something they didn't like, that's, that's where we'd love to hear it. Um, and hopefully come up with solutions, right? So the, so our first meeting is kind of looking at last year's events, kind of going through them, seeing, seeing if there's anything you want to change for the next year. Seeing, seeing if there's anything that, uh, that needed to be addressed for the next year. Um, then the second meeting really is looking at that, that next year and any new events. Um, trying to put together an entire event calendar for the entire year, and that event calendar is all of the events that take place on town land, um, that are open to the public, um, or, or considered special events. So, so that's kind of the process we, we go through. We also utilize that, that meeting to really, um, let the special event organizers, they're all invited to that meeting, too, to take a look at, um, anything that's changed, um, with our paperwork process with the town. So, so we have been, um, kind of the last couple of years, we've been covering our, uh, security needs, um, for these events, because that changed two years ago. Um, and then our, uh, state collected sales tax, so also changed, uh, last year. So, so we did kind of cover that to make sure everybody understands those processes and, and, and make sure everybody, uh, is abiding by them, too, you know, and has the correct information to abide by them. So looking at, uh, this year's, uh, calendar, we have, um, ninety-eight scheduled unique event days on, on town land over the course of the year. That's a, the, in your packet, you have a couple of things. You have the, the meeting minutes, so you can kind of see what was discussed at those meetings. But you also have the, the new 2025 Special Event Calendar Draft, and so that's what we're looking to kind of get, um, approved tonight. And I can kind of, uh, talk about some of the things we talked about in, in those meetings and some of the things that came up through that process. The first is really, you know, street closures and, and first Friday street closures, that we had long conversations about, about that. Public Works really, uh, saw some, some problems with some of the long street closures. Really felt that they were sometimes putting our staff in, in dangerous situations at, at the, those long street closures go from, went all the way down to Snowmass Drive, and so that's, that's what we consider our long street closure. The short street closure just goes from Went to Third Street, so that's, that's kind of a, what we would call a short street closure. And, uh, I'll share my screen here, because it'll, a visual kind of helps explain this a little bit better. So we'll continue, um, everybody was, in the task force was very interested in continuing with, uh, the short street closures for those, um, winter months, but in January and February and potentially March, actually not closing down, um, Main Street, and, because we're activating that, at, uh, Chacos Park in that Fourth Street section. And so that would be kind of the closure during those months when we activate. In January, we have the family skate night, and February is gonna be Valentine theme. Hopefully we'll still have some ice there, so we'll have ice skating in February 1st Friday, too. And so those, so that was all accepted, um, by the, the task force, but, but really what we were talking about is the May, June, July, August, and September. Um, those had historically been our longer street closures. We, Public Works had seen, um, some people not, uh, abiding by the street closure. Pushing them out of the way, driving cars down, not, you know, leaving cars on the street, parking there, not paying attention to any of our signage that we put up on those first Fridays, where there's no parking in those long street closures on Main Street. And so our Public Works employees have had a real tough time of dealing with that issue. People not, you know, literally, you know, almost running them down sometimes. And then having to get the people who aren't abiding by the no parking, get out of that space when it's activated and there's pedestrians, and so they've really needed, spent a lot of time working among that. That needs to change, you know, that we really feel like that was putting them in, in not a situation that's sustainable, so. And, and not a situation we want to put them in either. So, um, so there was some thought process of only doing short street closures, um, for all First Fridays, so Went to, um, Third Street. That does, doesn't really make a lot of sense for, um, Carbondale Arts, who have been really working super hard as, as the kind of, um, you know, overseer of First Fridays now, of establishing, you know, more activation at, at, at the, at that end of the street with the local businesses. And so they've really been establishing a relationship with those people, saying, hey, you know, we're, we're running First Friday, how do you want to be involved? How, you know, how can we help you, you know, be involved? And so the idea of, that came from staff of just shutting down, um, that, you know, that short closure for all year, wasn't helping them at all. And, and we want to help First Fridays be successful. We want to help Carbondale Arts, you know, who's running it, you know, with their efforts, and so, so we kind of did a, did a hard look at, okay, so, so how would this look? Um, if we did a, a long street closure without, you know, putting our Public Works overtime staff in, in jeopardy, helping people to abide by the rules. And, and so we came up with a, a bunch of strategies to do so. One of the issues, and I'll bring this up, share my screen. Uh, can I share this? It says host disabled screen sharing. There we go. It's kind of small. So the, the blue square here, um, would, would represent, uh, this would be a long street closure for, for those months we talked about, May through September. Um, the blue square, squares you're seeing on the map, that's Main Street, that's our street closures. But what we looked at is having, um, sections of Main Street closed versus one long closure. A couple of reasons we looked at that is, um, Sopra's Lodge. When we, you know, before Sopra's Lodge existed over there, when we do our long street closures, you know, we didn't have as much traffic in and out. We didn't have, you know, uh, public safety potentially needs over there and with emergency vehicle access needs as, as much as we do now. And so, so we looked at Third and Second Street as being vehicle north-south passage zones. Um, there is, uh, four-way stop signs in both of those locations. There is crosswalks in both of those, those locations. Uh, we would put up type-three barriers at, at each one of those locations on Main Street, type-three and type-one barriers there.
What are, what are those?
Yeah, tell us what those are.
Okay, so a type-three barrier is a three-panelled, you know, street closed. It's, it's very visual, um, you know, it's, and then... Um, you know, it's, and then a type-one is just a sawhorse style. So that's how you close it. You'd have your type-three and two, two type-ones. To close um, all those main street access points. And, but, and pedestrians would need to realize this is a street crossing that has vehicle traffic on it. But it is a, it is a four-way stop there. It does have um, uh, crosswalks painted there. And so, you know, what we had talked at, at the Special Event Task Force with some of the, the event organizers, like, can you guys help us do this with volunteer base? You know, our Public Works and Parks Department, you know, is, is willing to put out the um, you know, the, the closure elements, the closure pieces that need to close that. But we're not going to put four more people, five, six more people on overtime to, to staff it all night. And so we asked the, the event organizers who have good uh, volunteer bases if, if they would be willing to look at that as part of their, you know, um, first Friday, uh, you know, job. And so, so that's kind of what we have come up with. And uh, and, and I really think it's important, when you look at the red lines, that's just kind of a traffic pattern. Um, and if you, if you really made that blue closure the entire way of Main Street, you've cut off access to Sopris Lodge. You'd have to, on a long street closure, if you're coming down County Road one hundred to get to Sopris Lodge, you'd have to go down Snowmass Drive to Sopris all the way around um, to like Sixth. And then down Colorado, back towards Main Street and then down the alley, actually, to get to Sopris Lodge. So don't feel that that's, that's a good scenario. So, so this was kind of a compromise um, on all sides a little bit. Um, to try to, you know, not only appease the pedestrian and the safety aspect of the pedestrian nature of First Fridays, um, but to also appease a, a vehicle traffic north and south, so. Um, so wanted to present that tonight and just see how, how the trustees feel about that. Um, if we want to talk about that now, I have a lot, some other stuff to cover, but if we want to talk about that now, it's probably appropriate to do so.
Thanks, Eric. Yeah, let's pause there for a minute. Any questions, comments, feedback on that proposal?
I mean, I, yeah, I did hear from Carbon Dell Arts um, folks with some, with their, their concerns about the closure. And I feel like this seems like a good compromise to me. Um, obviously there's to be discussed. Yeah, can they do the volunteer thing? I think that would, could work fine. I don't know.
And what would the volunteers be doing exactly, Eric? They're just making sure that people abide by the closure and don't pull onto this Main Street?
Yeah, and, and kind of, I envision it acting as kind of crossing guard.
Right.
You know, um, with a, a vest or a volunteer shirt, First Friday volunteer shirt, kind of almost like the Peace Patrol, you know? Um, with a handheld stop sign and just, just helping, you know, make those crossings safer.
Other thoughts?
It makes sense. I mean, let's try it and give us, I'd be willing to volunteer. I think probably some of us would probably that'd be, sounds like a fun way to have something to do for a couple hours.
Do you find that the staff seem to have more trouble with the like, initial clearing of the street and setting up of the stuff? Or is it more so later on at night, people trying to come through? Because I mean, I don't know if we were, we would solve the, the volunteer thing may not solve that problem of you may not be able to get around cer- just a certain amount of friction of getting people to move their cars and be able to set up all the stuff.
Yeah, Kevin might be able to answer that a little bit better than me. But uh, you know, we also talked about just more of a um, a public education, you know, on how-to First Friday, right? You know, these streets are going to be closed. Here's your pedestrian map for First Friday. Here's the vehicle map for First Friday. Here's how to get around. Just kind of more, more public information on, you know, how to do it.
Yeah, I, I would say that this compromise will probably improve the situation. What we were seeing was people, you know, midway through the event, later in the event, that were in vehicles just getting frustrated because they didn't know what to do, so they were just moving stuff out of the way. And there was a couple of times that we tried to stop them and they just kept driving right toward our people and they had to jump out of the way, which our guys are at least partially trained on traffic control. But when you take that scenario and throw in a bunch of pedestrians that are probably not paying attention, I, I do think this will improve that because they can just go straight across.
Thanks, Kevin. Other feedback on this one before we hear the rest of the plan? Anybody have concerns about this?
Doesn't sound like it. Makes sense to me, too. I mean, I, I've, I've wondered for a long time if there's a way to change that, and I think that this makes a lot of sense. I mean, often, I live down Second, so I come up Second, and there's just not a lot of people in the middle of the street until you get down to kind of the Fourth and Main and each direction from there. So I think people will still use the street and then they'll use the sidewalk to cross and then they'll, I think that'll work great. It'll still give it that same vibe, but it just allows traffic flow. So great job kind of finding a compromise that hopefully works better.
And I guess the only other comment I might make is just, like, I don't know if it matters or not, but maybe if, if we have a spare police car to park down at the one end at Snowmass Drive, if you think that is a spot where, you know, I don't know. I think staging those around is not a bad idea either to kind of reinforce, at least, like, hey.
Yeah, we, we talked a little bit about that, too, and, and kind of a, you know, um, we, we've used hard closures like that with vehicles, um, like during Mountain Fair and stuff, and it, and it's, it's proven to be pretty successful with that, you know, Rosie Bell Bus parked there or staged or whatever. But um, you know, and, and so uh, Police Chief's doing some uh, research really on, on barriers, too. And, and not only barriers to stop traffic, but to stop, man, we have to think this way, unfortunately, uh, people using a vehicle as a weapon. So, so there is, um, that's on his mind, right, for these closures that, you know, that we're talking about. And so, um, so he's doing some uh, some research on that and just seeing if, you know, removable ballards are a way to kind of help that process. Or there's, there's equipment that's made out there, um, you know, that is movable, but when you take it off its wheel and set it down, no car's getting through there. So, um, very expensive equipment though. So, so we are, we do need to think that way unfortunately these days. And uh, and so, you know, that's, that's kind of a solution is to put a, kind of a harder barrier there um, on, on those access points where that could be the case, so. And then Carbon Dell Arts is also really looking at activation in, in that zone, right? Um, you know, uh, you know, the Clay Center is, is going to activate each First Friday. They've already put in a request, you know, for that, that closure, because they are going to activate that, that zone for, and for First Friday. We're going to have a, a food court down there, too. So I think it's, you know, important to, to figure this out for the long, long haul of, of that full Main Street activation for First Friday. So, so we're getting there.
Great, great. Alright, what else you got for us, Eric?
Um, so just uh, Fourth Street closures is also on, on the street closure. And that's really for uh, May First Friday, Farmer's Market, um, Potato Day, Dia de los Muertos. So those are all kind of the closures that use Chacos Park, Fourth Street Plaza, and Fourth Street to Garfield sometimes, just depending on the event. So that's on, on the docket to be uh, approved also. Mountain Fair, we talked about Mountain Fair. Um, continue to extend Friday, Saturday hours uh, for music to ten PM. But to have the music on Sunday evening and earlier, um, and, and at the latest for amplified music by nine PM. Um, this is allowed for an earlier Sunday evening fair breakdown that proved to be less disturbing to the neighbors in the past, and they want to continue with that. Um, Carbon Dell Wild West Rodeo, so they did a great job last year of just hiring and spending money on, on security staff to um, really in vehicles to patrol and, and not allow people when they fill up their onsite parking to park on any of those county roads. And, and it was very successful along with, of course, the help of our police department, too. You know, we, we put up some pretty good efforts to sign and, and to have some of our vehicles out there, too. And, and to, all you gotta do is when somebody pulls over and starts parking, they flick their lights on and that usually solves it. And, and they're doing a great job of, of, you know, of selling and getting people, you know, to look at, at their shuttle service. And so I think they're going to continue um, to really, you know, make that, make that the easiest way to, to be out there, right? And the easiest way to transfer back and forth between town and, and the rodeo grounds. And so, so they're going to continue with, with all those efforts. And then parades, so parades, uh, we have Dandelion Day Parade, um, the, the Pride Parade, um, which was part of a, our May Family Block Party is actually going to be in June First Friday this year. So they're kind of, that's kind of still to be determined a little bit, but that's, that's the move they're making, because June is Pride Month. So, so they want to associate themselves with that, that month. Potato Day and Fourth of July parades, um, will be our longer parades. Um, we'll just have to kind of really look at, at the, that Main Street block and see where those construction projects are, um, to, to figure out if we need to turn into Went first or if we can go over all the way on Main to Seventh Street. So that'll be kind of decided at, at that point, um, when we know more about the construction there of the pool and, and the Forest Service. Um, and then Dia de los Muertos Parade, so we did talk about that. And, and, you know, that procession, um, you know, stops and kind of does a, you know, performances. And so, so we did have some traffic issues with, with that, that procession last year. So we're going to really look at a larger detour for that, um, just during the per- that procession timeframe and take people all the way down Snowmass, you know, not down Seventh, Seventh Street. I mean, sorry, Sopris Avenue. I said Seventh Street in this and I, and I meant Sopris Avenue. So, um, yeah, so that larger detour, just kind of really, kind of little bit more effort to close down the streets for that procession. And we just, you know, saw some backup of traffic there. When, if we just made them go around it, it wouldn't have happened, so. Um, and, and to protect that procession, too. It's a, we talked about how to, um, the procession is a big procession. And so they uh, they got kind of squeezed out and, and there were some potentially unsafe moments during that procession when the crowd kind of crowded in on the dancers and the big puppets and everything. So, so we're going to have kind of a, the idea and thought process there is to have a roving kind of, you know, barrier with them so that, so that the people watching it have to be outside of that roving barrier with them. So that, that should work, we think.
Like a human barrier?
Yeah, and like a, like a string or decoration barrier that would be a part of that, kind of, you know, with costumed up people. And so they'll actually just kind of push the crowd out while the procession can come through.
That's a great idea.
Yeah. So what else is on here with running races and the street closures that are associated with those? So, yeah, what we've seen in the past, Mount Sopris runoff, Where My Peeps At, uh, Ross Montessori Tater Trot for Potato Day, um, the Turkey Trot for uh, Thanksgiving, and then the Jingle Bell Run. So those are um, all um, existing events, but just need to be approved through you guys, through this process. And then there was um, there was an addition, you know, kind of a late ninth inning addition um, to the, that did make it into the packet, but I just wanted to make aware of it as a, as an additional street closure that hasn't happened before. It's a new one. So, um, Andy's Anker Youth Empowerment Program's interested in um, doing a block party on Second Street and uh, to Main from Garfield, um, in front of Katie and Kay. And so that would be for their twenty-fifth anniversary on June seventh. So that's a, that's a new, new event, um, and just want to make sure you see that as a new event. And if, and make sure that gets approved through this process, too.
And is that the, so that's not First Friday, that's a Saturday?
Yeah, it's a Saturday. So it would be just a, a, you know, they would, you know, provide all the paperwork for a street closure. Um, and that would be just a, not a closure of Main Street, but just a closure of that, that block. Just that block on Second Street, uh, Garfield.
It's in here. It's on our calendar draft.
Okay.
You made it.
Yeah, it was, yeah, it was last minute. So the other thing, um, and Lauren, I'm, I'm not sure, I was gone a little bit last week, so I didn't know if you had a chance to talk about the uh, concerts in the park. Okay, okay. So that's the one thing that's kind of still to be determined on, on the calendar. We have some placeholders in there, but as far as um, you know, who's going to be running that, um, there's the thought processes that we go out with an RFP. That's still just where we're at, just want to make sure.
That's correct, and that will probably go out within the next two weeks, otherwise they'll run out of time.
Yep, okay, fantastic.
What's the parameters of that? Are they, you're trying to get the same thing for what? You got five concerts or whatever for ten grand?
I don't think there's any way that they could actually accomplish that, because I, I suspect that that's one of the problems. And we had a long talk with, with Steve and Ralph and Marty and Eric and myself. Um, and part of the problem is that we are spending for, for concerts less than other jurisdictions are paying for one.
Exactly.
And um, so it's quite possible that in order to do anything near, whether it's three or four concerts, I don't think we would even get five, although it's possible. That there may be a request to come back and say, we can't find anybody to do it for this. You know, the, here's what we got for proposals. How do you want to handle it?
Yeah, I mean, I'd, I'll just say that like, Katie and Kate, uh, we've heard that it went up and as a, or I, you know, we, I know it's happening. So we talked about it a little bit, and at least from our perspective, it didn't seem like that uh, compelling of a proposition of, like, oh, yeah, oh, they can make this money, but it's kind of like, oh, it's a jo- another job for all the staff to do on top of.
Well, I think that part of the issue is that Steve and Ralph have been banking on their relationships with people and pulling people in when they know that they're doing a concert somewhere else, and then they're finding places for them to stay. They're not necessarily putting them up at hotels. No one's coming here specifically for that, and it's become more and more difficult. And that's part of the reason we had a conversation about why there were so many changes last year. Is because if we're paying them five hundred dollars and they get a better offer, they're out of here. And they, they accept the other offering, cancel on us at the last minute. And that's why the advertising suffers and like, everything sort of rolls downhill from there. So we're, we're trying to figure out exactly what those parameters are in those RFPs.
Yeah, it seems like a tricky, tricky thing to get, get right, or get somebody who wants to take it on. I'm sort of curious of, yeah, if there's like, do you, are Ralph and, are they interested in? Okay, because I might like, encourage them to put a proposal in and, but maybe we, yeah, just try to find a somebody else to team up with them, especially on the promotional side of it, because I think that was, and maybe that does mean we have to do fewer concerts or whatever, but.
I think that's part of it, and then the money piece is part of it as well.
But I think just maybe a little bit more, yeah, uh, new age marketing strategy.
So we're putting in an RFP, I mean, and I think we'll hope that the RFP is realistic. Like, if you're hearing from people, nobody's going to bid on this, let's not waste our time, right? Like, if we need to reduce the number of shows, or if we need to look for other sources of funding or sponsors or whatever, let's do that so that we have something.
And that's the conversation that we're having right now.
Okay, great. Eric, anything else? Or is that most of the events?
No, so, yeah, just you're kind of approving, you know, that calendar and those events. Obviously, you know, these uh, special event producers come back to us and fill out all of our necessary paperwork. So if there is a liquid license, you'll see all that paperwork again, and it'll come back in front of you, so.
Great. Alright, questions from the board, and then I'll see if anybody from the public has any comments on this calendar before we consider approval. Any questions or comments? Okay, uh, any comments from the public on the special events and street closures calendar? Doesn't look like it. Anybody online? It's not like a formal public hearing, but always worth asking if people have thoughts. Uh, I would just say before we entertain a motion that, a couple of things. One is, thank you, Eric, for running a really um, effective process. I know that this process developed over a long period of time, um, I think before I was involved. And uh, it's one of these processes that we probably take for granted, like, oh, of course, we do the whole calendar for the whole year at once. But it didn't used to be that way, right? And so it'd be people applying throughout the year for street closures and parade permits and parks and all these things. And so I just love the fact that we've got a system and it really works well, but that doesn't just happen. It happens through a lot of effort and, and staff time and, and community involvement. So thanks to everybody who's involved. And then I would also just comment that I think we've said on this board for a long time, it's, the events we have are so cool and unique and local serving, right? Like, everybody's welcome to come, everybody's invited, but these events all stand on their own with local residents going out and having a good time and interacting with each other and building community. So it's great to be approving an events calendar like this and not something where we're just trying to pull in the tourists and raise our sales tax revenue or fill the hotels or whatever, and other places have to do that, but that's not the one. And other places have to do that, but that's not the way that we function. And, um, I just think that this calendar reflects our community really well. So thank you for everything and everybody else that, um, that made that happen. Any other comments or a motion?
Just a quick, quick question, and I apologize if I haven't made notice of it before. Do we have an actual paper calendar that we, that we put out with all of these dates on them at some point? Because I would lo- love to make sure that as many people that can possible, and obviously leading with date, you know, so people can go, start there. But, I mean, that would be totally worth it. I think people at some point or another go through their Google calendars, whatever, and say, oh yeah, I would definitely want to make sure I have this, this and this and that and that and there. But I would love to see a really nicely designed poster. I think that would be worth the effort and money, um, that has everything for the year on there. Um, I think it'd make people really appreciate all that goes into it also. You know, there's a little bit of that too.
Okay, good suggestion, anything else?
That could also be a good partnership with the tourism.
Yeah, yeah, I mean somehow.
That's great.
All of this in one spot would be, would be great.
But I think that's totally right, like, and maybe the concerts also, they might have something to say. They know how to do that stuff, like, and yeah, it's pairing them with, I think that's great. Yeah.
Anyone want to make a motion?
I'd move to approve the 2025 Special Events and Street Closures as recommended by the Special Events Task Force.
Second. Motion by Erica, I think Chris B. too, Christina, so second by Chris. Any questions or comments before we vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Stain or no votes? Motion passes unanimously, all right, thanks Eric.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, now for the big one on our agenda this evening, which is the Carbondale Mobility and Access Plan, also known as MAP Carbondale, um, potential adoption. I think we have consultants and staff ready and members of the Bike Ped Commission can share thoughts and members of the public can as well. You guys got printed copies?
I, thank you, Kay.
So I wanted one of those, I didn't think to ask.
Yes, I downloaded a new app.
Oh, really? You have to show me how you do that.
We can share it.
We know this has been a long time coming and a lot of work gone into this, so we look forward to your presentation.
Not gonna bore you with my diatribe, other than just reminding you that we have been working on this for quite a while now. You know, one of the big directions from the board when we started this process was to kind of combine future looking things, but also having projects that we could actually latch on to and do. And I think that this plan puts those together. I don't think that there's ever any perfect plan, which is part of, you know, not that it's not, perfect isn't the only reason, but the recommendation is to take a look at this thing once every three years and see, you know, where have we made progress, what do we need to update, what has changed, you know, technology could change? Give us some more ideas. I can tell you, for the short time that I've been here, the community sentiment might change based on what has happened in the community. And we shift focus from this type of project to that type of project. So, um, you know, Matthew and his team have done a really good job, in my opinion. They can, he's gonna go through kind of a brief overview and then, um, we'll see what the public has to say and answer any questions that you got.
Well, that's good. Thanks, Kevin. Yep. You can stay with us if you want to, Kevin, I have a feeling we might have questions. Okay, good.
Okay, uh, I'm gonna share my screen, if that's okay. Okay, am I using this right? Cool. Uh, hi, I'm Matthew, I'm a transportation planner, um, from consulting firm Felsberg-Holton-Ilevig. We're a transportation plant engineering firm out of Denver, but we've been working with Jared and Kevin on this since sometime in 2023, I think. And I've got, I know, I think I've talked to at least a few of you before. Um, some of you have varying levels of familiarity with this, so I have a brief, just kind of overview of the process we went through to get where we are today and then quick overview of what's in plan. And then, uh, yeah, happy to talk through any questions you have. So just to kind of reiterate, I'm, I'm hoping you're all at least familiar with this. Like this is a study, the intent of this was to really focus on mobility in Carbondale, specifically local mobility and identify what are the issues people are having getting around Carbondale today and/or may have in the future, and what are some opportunities to proactively improve transportation and better integrate it with land use and all those things. And kind of ultimately looking to establish a long-term multimodal vision. You know, I think the timing of this was very intentionally coming right off the heels of the comprehensive plan update. At a, you know, has a pretty significant section on transportation and kind of reiterates the, the sentiment of the community for wanting this to be a safe, walkable place for people. And then kind of the, kind of the intended outcomes of this were a specific list of recommended infrastructure projects that the town can implement over time to make things safer, more connected, more comfortable. Um, and then we also built, I'll get into this, a toolbox that kind of informed the development of those recommendations and also is just kind of a, a tool that you all have going forward to make other improvements. And then, um, you know, like, obviously there's a lot of recommendations in this plan that are beyond the means of not just Carbondale's, but any town's kind of municipal budget. So there's naturally a need for outside funding to make these improvements. And really the, kind of the, one of the core element points of a plan like this is to position communities for funding, which I will say, there's, you know, there's a lot of uncertainty about what the future of infrastructure funding is, but hopefully it's, uh, better than it may be today. So just kind of a quick overview of the planning process that I said, I've, I've seen you all, many of you at various events over the past year or so. But I'll just kind of step through, so you know, kind of the core purpose of this plan, we kind of summarize in this vision. And this was kind of hashed out, this was, we went through multiple versions of this and talking through the stakeholder committee and with Jared and Kevin about, kind of like really trying to reiterate in like a succinct way, what is the actual purpose of MAP Carbondale? And I don't necessarily think I need to read all of that, but it's really just focused on making this a safe, connected, affordable, giving a safe, connected, affordable transportation network. And then, you know, kind of building off that, oftentimes in plans like this, there are goals or guiding principles, you know, they can be called a lot of different things, but really just kind of hitting on, you know, in a, in a brief way, what are the kind of the key things we're trying to achieve? We're trying to make Carbondale safe, sustainable, give people choices for however they want to get around, make it an equitable, community-connected, um, you know, fiscally, fiscally responsible, joyful to get around, and then adaptable, because like Kevin said, you know, best practices and sentiments about transportation changing every day. So, you know, what we're thinking today maybe doesn't make sense in five, 10 years, so we gotta kind of just be adaptable. Obviously, community engagement was a really key element of this plan and all planning processes. We, like, I, I don't live in Carbondale, the people who live here know the streets of Carbondale much better than I do or ever will. So it's really, uh, key that I, they kind of inform us and helping us learn what are the actual issues people are seeing every day when they get around and what are the things that they think might be effective. And, um, so I think these were some of the events that I saw some of you at was, you know, we did a lot of in-person and virtual engagement. Um, the Carbondale Connect website is a really great tool for the town in getting the word out about projects. So we had a big, big presence up there throughout the process. In-person outreach, we, we tried to focus more on, you know, like, kind of generally in transportation planning, since really since pandemic, we found that big, like, open type events are less effective than they used to be. People don't want to come to like a room like this on a Thursday night and just talk about transportation. You know, there are some people like that, but you know, we, it's not, it's, it tends to be a self-selective group of people that are maybe not representative of the community. So we found going like quote unquote pop-up events a lot better. So like the first Friday, we were at several of those, just like going to where people already are, and then they can stop and talk to us for five, 10 minutes, take a survey, grab a flyer. So that, that's kind of what we, we really focused on those events and our in-person outreach. Did a lot of virtual outreach, there's, uh, we got a lot of help from town staff and getting the word out through emails and through, uh, radio broadcasts and flyers. And we, we sent postcards to everybody in Carbondale. And, you know, we really directed people to this, uh, virtual platform, kind of like online certain. So this map you see here is just, this was the second round of input where we basically asked people to pinpoint, you know, locations in Carbondale they felt were the highest priority for improvement. And it's sort of a heat map, so the, you know, the oranges and the reds are where the comments, but you can see, you know, we, it's over like a large majority of the town, kind of where most of the activity is. And then we also had a kind of initial, and so this is the, down here you see the phase two commenting map, the phase one commenting map, which was really just like an open-ended, it was just a map of Carbondale. And essentially the prompt was tell us whatever you have to say about transportation. Some comments were not rail transportation, but that's to be expected. Uh, but we had over 500 comments that kind of range, that ranged all over the town and they were all over. Some people, uh, uh, like, are very much focused on biking and walking, I would say. But, you know, there are people who value cars and we get comments like that. So we just, you know, had to hear what everyone had to say. So yeah, community engagement was really kind of a driver throughout. The first kind of key technical element of this project was what we ended up calling it, just a community and network assessment, which is essentially an existing conditions report that this just kind of dived into like on a, a technical side, what is going on with transportation in Carbondale. Part of that was a review of previous plans, like I mentioned the comprehensive plan, but there have been other more transportation-specific efforts that have happened in Carbondale. Like there's been stuff with CDAT, there's been related to the highway, there have been some more focused, you know, transportation improvement projects, corridor studies. And so we wanted to kind of build off all that, not just like throw it out and start from scratch. Did some assessment of community demographics, had, um, got some traffic volume and speed data, which, which was really valuable because a lot of, a lot of communities, you know, there's usually pretty good data for that with the local roads. It's often hard to get speed and volume data, but Carbondale actually have a pretty good, um, collection. So we were able to get some good data to start with to kind of see where is speeding happening? Where is, uh, traffic heavier than we might want it to be? Did a more, more focused assessment of active transportation, just kind of trying to map. There's a tool called Level of Traffic Stress, which is kind of essentially grades a road on base, how comfortable is this road to bike today? So we did that, um, kind of identified where are the people, places in Carbondale that people might want to be biking and walking? And in a place like Carbondale, it's small enough, you kind of like feasibly could walk or bike everywhere. But we really wanted to focus on like schools, parks, uh, like downtown, just really like, those are kind of the key places we're trying to get people to. And then obviously the highway was the big focus of this. And I, I will, you know, I'm sure you're all familiar, there was another Highway 133 study that was going on concurrently with ours. And they were part of our stakeholder group, so that, that actual report is an appendix to our report. But, you know, we took a look at the highway too, because obviously that's, that's the most dangerous road in Carbondale by far. It's the one that's hardest, busiest, it's the fastest, it's the loudest, and it's, it's all, and, you know, Carbondale's not alone. A lot of communities have state highways running through the middle and it's, it's always a challenge. CDAT, I would say, and in recent years has become, um, more open to improvements to the highway that are kind of like against, you know, they've, they're, they're even, they have been very focused on highway efficiency in the past. That's still their priority, but less so, and they're more willing to work with communities. So there is a lot of focus on Highway 133. And then, so kind of the three kind of core, uh, outcomes, recommendations of this plan, there's kind of three, and we'll step through all these a little bit more detail. But I mentioned that toolbox, which this is essentially a collection of several dozen different kind of infrastructure improvement types or like project things that could be applied throughout Carbondale. This is things like raised crosswalks or bike lanes or kind of all of that, like, just like best practices on multimodal improvements that the project recommendations, but also just kind of general resource for the town. Then like the specific project recommendations, this is that, that big list that's towards the end of the report, that's kind of like a specific intersection, what we're recommending or a specific, specific street segment. And that was really based on, like I said, that commenting map we got from the public where we got comments on probably almost every intersection in Carbondale. And then, you know, talking through the council stakeholders, keep building out that project list and then identifying through the second round, round of engagement, what is the appropriate treatment? At all these places, we know that there's a need for improvement. So that's the project list. And finally, there's a, you know, an action item strategy list that's more sort of like policy, programmatic sorts of recommendations that will help to, because, you know, the project list is quite long and implementation is going to take a while. There are policy programmatic actions the town can take to help with that implementation and but just kind of overall shift the mindset towards a more safe multimodal vibe in Carbondale, if you will. This is just kind of essentially the table of contents of the report that I won't go through in detail, but obviously there's an introduction, there's a kind of a high-level overview of the community engagement process. And there's a much more detailed community engagement summary as an appendix. The network vision is sort of a, that chapter is sort of a high-level overview of kind of like the philosophy almost of what, how this transportation plan was built. And, you know, it kind of highlights some of the previous work that was done in Carbondale that this is building off of and has some focus on stuff like complete streets and those kinds of things of like, why are we doing this plan? And what were we trying to achieve? Toolbox, like I mentioned, and then the network recommendations, those, so those two chapters are really kind of the meat of the plan, I would say. The implementation plan, um, gives a little bit more guidance on, you know, what's next, like what, you know, obviously there, I said, there's a cost to all of this. There's some guidance, and like I mentioned, that, that is evolving every, every day. But, um, it's good to at least have a game plan for seeking funding. And then, yeah, the appendices are the, the outreach summary, the existing conditions report. And then, like I mentioned, the other highway study. And so I'll just kind of step through these three key elements. So the multimodal toolbox, uh, this is just a screenshot of kind of one of the pages. And like I said, these, this is split into three, um, prime groups of improvements. So team of like intersection treatments, so like, you know, add an intersection, what can you do to make people go slower and make it safer across is the focus of that. Multimodal facilities, this is more kind of like a segment basis, things like sidewalks, bike lanes. And traffic calming is more like things like, uh, you know, traffic circles, things that just like you put in the street to make people go slower, essentially is what traffic calming means. And each of these, um, elements of the toolbox, they all have like a cut sheet, like you'll see here, that has a overview of what, what's the purpose of this, um, item? What's the, what, basically what's the basic description of it? What are the reasons you might want to install it, the benefits? What's a summary of kind of like, you know, some of these are more appropriate, like a lot of these things are not appropriate on a state highway. Some of them are only appropriate on a state highway, so there's some guidance on which types of streets in Carbondale might make most sense. So it's some specific examples called it. And then, like, with all these things, there are implementation considerations related to accessibility, drainage, like things that, you know, are not really kind of the focus of a high-level planning study like this. But as you move towards engineering some of these improvements, there are things that have to be taken into account that, just like engineering considerations is really what most of that is. And the project recommendations, like I said, this is kind of the big, this is one of the meats of, um, of the plan. And I, I think there's about 60, somewhere between 60 and 70, uh, specific project recommendations. They're split into these six categories you see up on the screen, so intersections, still pedestrian crossings, this is more kind of like mid-block crossings, so like away from an intersection. Sidewalk improvements, this could be widening sidewalks, this could be filling sidewalk gaps, extending sidewalks. Traffic calming, this is really kind of like those speed mitigation projects essentially. Oh, sorry, I missed, but multimodal gaps, that's kind of filling in where there's not a sidewalk today or where we think there should be a bike lane. So that's kind of like filling in gaps in the network, sidewalk improvements is really improving existing sidewalks. And then amenity projects, these are things like, uh, um, you know, bike parking, things like that, that are not really essentially, essential to safety, but just like make biking and walking more convenient to folks or using transit. And, uh, so, you know, within the, there is a big, long project table that kind of summarizes all of these, provides, uh, identifies what the type of the project is, a brief description. One thing we did is kind of come up with a, a, a pretty simplistic, high-level ease of implementation rating just on a scale of one to three. So, you know, three would be like the great separated crossing for the highway we're recommending. That, that's a very difficult project that takes a lot of money, takes a lot of coordination with CDAT. It's like, it's not to say it's not feasible, it's just it's gonna take a lot of work. Whereas something like adding a crosswalk is a relatively simple, low-cost thing. So it, you know, it's good to just go into this with some understanding of like, some of these are pretty easy, some of them are not so easy. Um, we have, we have broken the, uh, projects into some recommended timeframes of zero to five-year implementation, five to 10, I believe, and then 10 plus. And that is really taking into account both priority for the town. So this is really where that second round of. second round of public feedback comes in, like where were the intersections we got the most comment? But then also taking into account that ease of limitation, like, the uh, great separated crossing of the highway is probably perhaps the most high priority project, but it's not going to happen in the next five years. That's, that's, that's just a fact. So it's, this is, there's some realism built into these um, uh, timeframe categories. And then we've identified a responsible agency for all these projects. And when you look at the list, it's, it's, actually the town who's responsible because, you know, the highway is C dot's authority. So anything to do with the highway, they're going to be a responsible agency with collaboration with the town. But for all the local roads, you know, it's you guys who have the authority to improvements. So, it's, you know, you're the responsible agency, but then, you know, there are partnership opportunities with school district, with R A S D A, with C dot to implement some of these. And then just to kind of tie those back to those guiding principles, we kind of flagged which guiding principle each of these projects is, was associated with, and some of them are connected to several, some of them are just one or two. Um, oh, there's, this is also, sorry, I didn't mention this earlier, but we have, outlined a couple of tactical urbanism pilot recommendations in the plan. These are those two kind of full spread, map sorts of sheets in the, in the chapter. I don't have a screenshot, but essentially what tactical urbanism is, is a way of doing things quick. Usually on a pilot kind of temporary basis, just to, you know, there are, recommendations for a lot of things in this plan that don't currently exist in Carbondale. And what we think, you know, that they've been proven to be effective in towns of all sizes. You never know how something's going to go until you try it. So tactical urbanism is a good way to just, use some, use some posts, use some signage, put something in the street, leave it there for six months, see how people like it. You might hear really positive things, you might really hear really negative things. But you know, that's, it's just kind of a good way to test that out. And obviously when you do that, you do a before and after study focused on things like, you know, a lot of these are, if we're trying to slow down speeds, we want to know, are we effectively slowing down speeds? Are we increasing number of walking and biking? Um, and so we, we kind of through discussions with the town and through some of the feedback we're getting from the public, identified two kind of primary corridors where we thought might be most, the best to like try some stuff in a pilot prop, pilot basis. And that would be Hendrick Drive, which I would say that's probably the, the road we heard about the most, aside from highway, of course, but it's hard to do tactical urbanism on a highway. But you know, Hendrick Drive, we heard a lot and we heard a lot that people speed, a lot on Hendrick Drive because there's, there's really very little stop control. And you have Main Street at the top, you have the highway. There may be one or two stop signs in between there, but it's, it's a very open, very wide road that people go really fast on. So that seems kind of like a, a really perfect test case for doing some, some traffics or some uh, track, street chicanes, things like that, just to see, you know, if they work in Hendrick, chances are they're probably working other places in Carbondale. And then eighth, it's kind of the south, the southern, the more southern portion of Eighth, Eighth Street is another place we heard a lot about and, it's a little bit of a different context from Hendrick's Drive. It's not so wide, it's, it's more straight, there is more stop control. So, we wanted to pick two like relatively different context streets, you know, Carbondale doesn't have super different context on those roads, but these are, different enough that you could try some different things and hopefully both get, um, good results. And like I mentioned, Kenny, like in both of these cases, really the desired outcome would be lower speeds, higher bike pad volumes. It's not necessarily trying to lower vehicle volumes, that's, not really the point of this. It may naturally result in that if people are, more comfortable walking and biking, don't feel the need to drive. But really the focus of these would be to reduce speeds and increase safety. And then the final kind of batch of recommendations is that more policy programmatic element, the action items. And uh, so like the, the, these vary quite a bit, what they're trying to achieve. Um, and I, I'm not going to go through all of them, but again, we've identified kind of broken, collaboration and partnership. These are things that, these are some of the things, you know, like looking at the highway, you know, there are, different designations that C dot has allowed local communities to make with um, highways that go through communities that you can kind of like essentially earn a lower speed limit. So things like that require partnerships or things like, education campaigns with the school district. It's like, just like things that you can do with other agencies to improve transportation. Um, sort of related to that is education and training, just like getting the word out about how to be safe. Uh, land use and development. So this kind of comes into play with the, like the funding implementation piece. Uh, you know, there's perhaps not as much going on in Carbondale as there are in other communities, but there is always development going on and that's a really good, way to get funding for transportation, you know, through things like uh, uh, impact fees, then there is a summary in the plan of that, but kind of like working with developers to lever, leveraging your kind of like, leveraging development to get money for transportation is a really effective thing. A lot of communities have had success with that. Um, multimodal and safety initiatives, that's kind of self-explanatory. And then, implementation price. I can't remember. Oh, I might have forgotten both plans, sorry. But it's another group of recommendations. And then um, again, similar to the project table, there's just these, this is kind of in a tabular format, just describing what is the strategy? When kind of like on a timeframe basis from zero to five years, five to ten, when would we, uh, some of these would be just kind of ongoing things that you, you know, you'd start once and just kind of do it on an annual basis. So, timeframe, again, responsible agency. This is all, again, largely town, uh, town actions, but there are things that, C dot could do with town, uh, uh, if your town requests it and then uh, partners to collaborate on it. Um, and then my last quick slide here is just kind of thinking through the future. So like Kevin said, this is, this is the, the first of this plan. It won't be the last. We haven't solved transportation in Carbondale, sorry. But I, you know, and like this is natural for every community of every size, transportation planning, like comprehensive planning, it's a never ending process. That's always taking into account growth, uh, changes and, like uh, best practices and all that. So, you know, kind of our recommendation is that, this plan gets an annual refresh specifically of the project list and the action item list. With not necessarily kind of replacing the project list with a whole new project list, but just kind of, going through with a comb every year and looking at our priorities, have our priorities changed because of, you know, direction from, or from the community or from commissions? So updating priorities and the phasing and kind of pro, providing, identifying progress on implementation towards any of the projects. And this is something that is not necessarily kind of the same level of effort as a, like the first of these plans was. So this is something that, you have Kevin and Jared are both very capable and they know Carbondale better than I do. So they are very capable of handling, kind of annual ref, refreshes and partnership with a lot of the very involved stakeholders you have in Carbondale. But then our recommendation is like kind of a more comprehensive update, similar to what you do with the comprehensive plan. I, I imagine you're looking at that every year and, making sure it's kind of consistent, but with a more significant refresh every three to five years. So, general recommendation is that this gets updated every three years and that kind of that larger, that larger update would take into account. Yeah, that would have a more robust community engagement process, like talking, there will be people in Carbondale three years from now who aren't, who weren't here when this plan was developed and we want to hear from them. Um, so you know, divide like, and there'll be new ideas for multimodal transportation in three years that we didn't have, when we were developing this plan and changing best practices. Um, you know, updating that existing and future conditions estimate, like hopefully we'll see that through the recommendations of this plan. Some streets' speeds have gone lower, but we might find, gone up somewhere else volumes. So, or their patterns on the highway might have changed. So just kind of incorporating new data and that. So yeah, that would be that kind of like a bigger map Carbondale two point O in twenty twenty-eight. Yeah. So that's, that's kind of a view of the plan. I have the, the full plan pull up here if you want to go to jump to anything or, if y'all have questions, happy to, ready to get into it.
Great. Thank you so much, Matthew. That was a great overview. Um, Jared or Kevin, anything else to ask before we start asking a few questions and then hear from the commission and the public?
Yeah, I would just add that um, in the packet, we did include some of the um, public input that we received prior to the meeting. I haven't received anything since. Um, we have prepared resolution one for you all tonight, if you do want to move forward and adopt the plan. And then lastly, um, with the age friendly Carbondale Highway one thirty-three study, I know we said it in the, the, write-up and in the report, there was a lot of alignment between the recommendations from both plans. And so, you know, I want to make sure that's well stated. Um, what is recommended in, the Highway one thirty-three study from H friend in the Carbondale isn't identical to what we are um, recommending, but there, a lot of alignment. And so, you know, we feel pretty confident that um, Matt Carbondale does encapsulate those. And so we felt confident including that as an appendix to the report. So that's all I have.
I can't not say something right. The only, um, the only thing I would add is um, we are aware that there are still a few typos in this. So you would be, if you choose to adopt it tonight, you would be adopting it with us, editing those like, so it doesn't go from number four to number eleven.
Okay. Good to know. We don't have to point out typos. Editing. How about uh, general questions for staff and, and for Matthew at this point? And then we'll hear from everybody else and then we'll bring it back for discussion, um, and feedback on next steps.
Just uh, in terms of just quick questions, one of, one of the um, one of the topics mentioned in here was sort of the need to sort of take, take stock with this tactical, or urbanism approach of, of putting stuff out there, seeing what sticks kind of. Um, do we have what we need to measure, traffic volumes and uh, and, and measure changes? Are there, are there physical, or is there infrastructure or capital needs that we need, to, to make sure that we can get the most out of, you know, collecting additional data as needed?
In general, we have what we need to do that. The one thing I would say that you'll probably see us coming back for, is um, uh, we, we can measure traffic volumes and speeds very easily with the stuff we have. We don't have the same technology for peds and bike volumes. So we would probably look to get that because, you know, as Matthew said, if you're looking to slow speeds and increase volumes, you need to measure both before and after.
And to, and to whatever extent there may be better technology, I know people are affected by seeing stripes across or seeing a tape across the road and they slow down, because there's a tape across the road. And so to whatever extent there may be, there may be things that are out there. If this is an ongoing process for five or 10 years, you know, the, the better we can be prepared to, to take stock of, of, of traffic and, traffic of all sorts, pedestrian, um, and bike as well, uh, the better, I think. So, so I think whatever, whatever we can do to make sure that we have, have those capabilities and they are, they are the sort of, current best practices, that'd be great.
We'll look into that. The, 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 the one thing I'll say is that, and we'll keep that illusion out there. Most people think that those tubes across the road are counting traffic and that's it. And that's not all they're doing.
Right.
So it doesn't tend to change behavior as much as like a police car sitting there, even one of our speed trailers.
Hey, other questions clarifying for now, Jess?
Um, I just had a question on page sixty, the project funding. The, are these real costs that we think are, they just look lower than what we've been told things cost? And so I would, I would be leery about putting those out to the public and then them seeing our budget, and being like, oh, a raised crosswalk only costs fifteen thousand dollars according to our map.
I didn't focus in a lot on the numbers and I think that would probably be something we'd want to revisit.
Yeah, a hundred thousand per intersection for pedestrian crossing improvements makes me say, hmm. So I just don't want to put this out to the public and say like, look at these great prices we have for, all these improvements. And then when we do the budget, somebody comes and says, well, you said it was only going to cost this much in our map. So.
That's fair. The, the one thing that will change costs a little bit, like particularly with head crossings, you know, what we're talking about, for crossing Highway one thirty-three is a little bit different than we would use in town. So I would expect the cost to be, lower. That being said, knowing the price of concrete and asphalt around here, I, I, I think that the fifteen thousand is a little low.
Yeah, and it, it just doesn't say that some of, so like a traffic signal, we're not going to do on a Carbondale in town road, over here, but it doesn't say that on this list. So I just think that that list might, it might be good to clarify that list a little bit.
Yeah, thanks Jess. It is helpful to have a general sense, but I agree, some of those need to be refined a little bit. But like to see traffic signal one to two million, it's like, oh, that's, that's really expensive and around about five plus. Um, yeah, so it's, but I agree, some of those need to be refined a little bit. But it's good to have at least a sense of scale um, in there. Other questions or comments before we hear from others?
I was just going to say that I, I really appreciate the sort of additions or changes to the multimodal network. It seemed like it, just looking at the map itself, but I guess we got a twenty nineteen and a proposed alternative. Um, and maybe we'll hear from, bikes and pet a little bit about, about that. But it just seems like, whatever was done there makes a lot more sense in terms of connectivity from one end to the other and, cured a lot of kind of dead ends and, and uh, incongruous, spots. Um, I happen to live along one of those. And so continuing Eighth Street, for instance, as sort of an inside passage, I think is a great, great thing. And I'm, I'm, grateful for whatever kind of went into kind of look, taking another look at that.
Yeah, thanks Ross. I wondered about that too, because I was, I was our liaison to the Bike Pet Trails Commission when we originally did the priority multimodal corridors, but it had a lot less, study and work. It was like a pretty quick project, that twenty nineteen one. So.
Yeah, no offense to twenty nineteen.
I feel like it's time to retire that. I'm not sure that it even needs to be in the plan if it's being replaced by another one, because I was a little bit unclear. When it says alternate, alternative priority multimodal network, I was like, well, which one is it?
Yeah. So I think maybe the wording of that figure should be changed. Essentially what that, I'm sorry.
We're on page fifteen is the new one that says figure three alternative.
It's this map with a bunch of blue lines on it.
Thirteen is figure two, the twenty nineteen priority corridors.
Yeah, I can try and clear. So yeah, the, the twenty nineteen network, obviously that was done before this project started and we were, shared that as something that had been, done before and identified as, you know, something that, like there was some effort put into identifying where do we want um, multimodal travel in Carbondale. So, like we got value out of that. I think it's, you know, there was at work put into it. So we found that to be valuable. But then, really like this Bloom network, it's not, perhaps priority multimodal network isn't the right phrasing. This is more, to, we have a section in this vision chapter about, way, a wayfinding plan is kind of being one of the recommended next steps in, or a, a recommended next step for mobility in Carbondale. And kind of the, the thought behind this figure three was developed, trying to say that, you know, the wayfinding plan shouldn't necessarily just focus on these orange and blue roads you see in this uh, night twenty nineteen, network. Really part of a wayfinding planning effort is identifying what is that, priority network for uh, biking and walking Carbondale. So this is just kind of showing, this was kind of, you know, some stakeholders in our, in our group kind of helped craft this, I, this, felt some of the priority corridors would be. So this is just kind of suggesting a, a potential wayfinding network. But I would say that neither one of these networks were kind of the only things we focused on in developing the projects, like, it was valuable to know that these roads have been previously identified as biking, walking priorities and to know that, some of the other, the additional ones in this map are seen as priorities, but, we kind of, we were looking at the whole network and developing our recommendations. This is more, these two maps are really just kind of showing what that core priority network for a wayfinding purpose is maybe. So there's maybe some rewording to do to kind of clarify. I'm just saying, this is where all the focus should be on these blue roads. It's just this, this could be your wayfinding plan that, you know, if you do a wayfinding program, you might direct people to these streets while acknowledging you want people to be able to walk and bike on every street.
Thank you. Other questions or comments at this point?
Um, I'll, you want to go, Erica?
Oh.
Go ahead, Erica.
I don't have a question. So um, I just um, really appreciated the toolbox section, as far as helping articulate, um, kind of these different methods that a lot of us see or we hear from constituents about. But this almost just helps us and the public get a better understanding of what, this is meant by these terms. And then I really appreciate like where they might go, but this isn't like where they should go, or this isn't necessarily the plan going forward. But at least it helps me visualize like, oh yeah, okay, I could see why that would make sense, at that, you know, crossing the intersection at Hendrix. Um, and so I just uh, appreciate that because it helped me understand, some of the principles. And I think it'll be helpful for um, anybody who's not in this, talking about this all the time, whether they're on the board or on the Bike Pet Trails Commission, because we can get pretty wonky. Um, and so I think this helps make it a more publicly accessible document. So thank you.
Thanks Erica. Let's just go around calling you had something.
Yeah. So thanks. This is, there's a lot of stuff in here. So thank you for your thoroughness. Just a quick question. So at the very end of the report, there's a section that says community and network assessment?
Yeah.
I kind of wonder about whether that should be further in the docu, further up in the document. And the reason I suggest that is that it's mobility and access, but we really don't mention transit at all until the very end. And I know that wasn't your focus and what you guys did was great, but I think it's really important to include that all the things we're doing is also because we have a regional transportation authority at providing services. And we've just started other services with Recycle and Downtowner that augment our ability to make this a very accessible town. And it's really useful information to give us context of what's actually already happening in Carbondale. And when people say things, it's really the best. I don't have a number.
It's the appendix.
Yes.
So it's really useful because there, everybody has their own anecdotal, there's so much traffic, there's so much this, they're going so many speeds or whatever. And it's really needs, need to have some basic data about what's happening in Carbondale. Accidents, all that kind of stuff, really useful. So the, all great stuff. I'm just wondering in terms of thinking, how do you share this with people instead of saying, well, if you really want to know what's going on around in Carbondale, now you have to go way to the end of the document. Is there a way to push it up a little further as kind of context for what's happening in Carbondale? And why we would want to have a mobility and access plan to make it safer for, for people to get around? And also think that even with the recommendations, which I think are, are great, I would really like to add transit as a, as a, in the toolbox. So we, it, we're fortunate and it's also can be confusing because our transportation planning in many ways is done at the regional level. And we don't have a transportation planner locally, but that, I think when I refitted this, it's a way to try to connect these things so that when we're making our streets safe for walkers and bikers, we're also thinking of this larger next step of, well, then they can get on the Downtowner, then they could get on Raptor so that we actually have a community that you really don't need a car very much if you don't want to use one. I just might.
Yeah, I mean, maybe you want to respond to that because I, I can see the logic of putting it where it is because it supports the sort of recommendations ahead of it, but I don't want to leave you with like seven different directions to go. So let's talk that through for a minute because that, that'd be a pretty big shift, I would think. And I would think there's some intentionality to the way that you organize things.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I, I asked Jared and Kevin to weigh in too, but I think kind of the intent was like that, kind of like keeping that data as like a holistic appendix that's got really all the detail. And then, I mean, I, I, there, there's probably a way to kind of like in this, you know, in one of the chapters have a, or a more robust, but still streamlined summary of some of the key observations of the data analysis that, because yeah, I think like it's pretty common in transportation plans to, in like the final document, you really want to focus it on the recommendations because I, like, the reality is a large majority of the people of Carbondale will never look at this document. And, you know, the ones who are going to look at it are probably more focused on what are we recommending than what we observe. But I mean, I so, I certainly understand your point of like, the data, an important part of this process that was a big focus early on. So, yeah, I think like it probably makes sense to kind of keep the majority of that towards as an appendix. If someone really is wanting the data, they can, you know, like, I, I'm not sure how you solve those reports, but you could upload appendix B as its own PDF and make that a really easy thing for someone to access. But I think like if, if we see value in it, we could kind of add a quick kind of existing conditions, observations or something summary to the main body of the report. I don't know, Jared or Kevin, if you have.
I, I really appreciate it. I think that's a great approach. You could always then just have a reference that links to the end of the report if people want to go there. But I think it, it's pretty important stuff and it gets lost. And if there's just a little bit of a summary, I think it'd be really helpful. Thanks.
And, and I would add in, in a lot of the action items, there are a lot of action items that relate back to the transit side of things that are kind of within the town's ability to influence. Um, and one of the action items is calling out, you know, encouraging use, education for Recycle Downtowner. Um, and so, you know, we could look at maybe, um, some of those action items to make sure it's pretty clear that continuing to support those multimodal options are, are, um, actions that the town needs to take.
That'd be great. Thanks Colin. Anything else for now? Did you have something?
Um, just to start off with my gratitude to Matthew for really doing a lot of work on this and, and drinking from a fire hose of public comment uh, and opinion on this. Um, and I'm, I'm pretty happy with where we are. I think the, I provided very probably annoyingly extensive commentary in August on it. So I think most of my comments are hopefully sort of in there. I think the one, one thing that for me, and I think, and I actually even started doing a little doodling and made a, made a, made sort of my own map. That, um, I guess I feel like identifying some of these areas where, um, where the, where there doesn't exist any sort of connection currently, but there may potentially, you know, for example, Industry Way is not called out on this one, but I would imagine in some future scenario with a roundabout and stuff, there will be a, you know, an idea of having pedestrian, you know, making a robust pedestrian connection between City Market and Eighth Street or ideally between the City Market and the dog park, you know, through that whole cat corridor. But it's not something we want to prioritize. It would only occur within that land use context, developer context, basically where somebody else is going to build it for us. So I, and I don't know exactly where those fit in, if it just needs to be something. But I guess the main thing for me is if we're doing a plan just to have those in people, in a future board's back of mind if they're negotiating with somebody, um, a lot of these parcels. A lot of these things could, could, could end up connecting in the future, but yeah, I don't know. So. Um, I can share that, this, this other map with you. And I, and I think it could just, I don't know where it could go in the com, public comment or something, but.
Any other questions before we hear from the public? Christina, did you have anything? I just had a couple of quick ones. Um, uh, lighting, was lighting considered that? Twenty nineteen map was actually generated by some community concern about not having enough lights on some corridors. I mean, you remember that Kevin, I think. And, and on that one, we had specified like night routes and stuff so that we could focus our lighting efforts and not just be reactive all the time to what people are saying is a dangerous feeling zone. So I might've missed it, but was that addressed in here at all?
Not specifically.
Okay. So that's just something else that we have to keep an eye on, I guess, then as we look at those priority corridors and investments, um, having a safe place. And the speed humps. Um, I get the raised crosswalks as like a platform, and that was referenced a lot of times. My concern is that if we put something in the toolbox, it's going to give people the sense that these are best practices. These are things that we want to see in our street and so, or in our community. So I don't want to put things in there that we would say, no, that's, that's just not a good idea. Best practice research doesn't support that. And we're not going to like people, everybody wants a speed bump on their street, I, you know, hypothetically. But if you do that everywhere, it ruins your whole network. So, um, I wonder if you could comment at all on those two things in the toolbox that don't seem to show up in the plan to ever be implemented.
Yeah. Um, so the, the one-way streets, you're right, that, that's, that's not recommended specifically ever anywhere in Carbondale that. And it was originally not in kind of our first or multiple drafts of the toolbox until there was some stakeholder, some like seared holder interest and at least highlighting those as a, and I like just kind of, from my own experience, I would say they aren't best practice. There are, not to say that they, obviously one-way streets exist in a lot of places and they function okay, but I, the, the challenge with them is there's pretty good data that they encourage speeding. You know, one of the kind of behind that is like, if you're driving this way and you have a car driving this way, you're just more aware of something else going on. So you're a little, but if you just have kind of a, a space yourself. So that, that's one of the drawbacks of one-way streets. They also, they can be like, I live in Denver in Cap Hill and there's one-way streets everywhere. You see people going the wrong way every single day. So there's like, there's a lot of, like, I think some of the, the benefits to one-way streets is they can, you know, if you convert a two-way to a one-way, you get more space to widen the sidewalk, added bike lane and add parking. But it's not to say that they're not ever a good idea. They're, you know, in our kind of throughout the planning process, we, it never, in our discussions with town staff is like something we felt was particularly applicable in a town like Carbondale. But so if, you know, if, if we get direction for you all that you just don't think it's worthwhile to include, that's an easy enough thing to take out. And I think on, on the speed humps, it's, it's a similar thing where that, it's kind of hard to, you know, specifically recommend that on a local street, on a, like a public street. Because you're right, the, you know, some, when they see one, they want it in their driveway. They want it in front of their driveway everywhere. And I would say it's also not a common thing that specifically gets recommended in a transportation plan, but I think, I think that one came out of, um, you know, for that first round of public engagement, there was a lot of interest in speed humps, speed bumps. But, you know, if, if we all decide that perhaps that's not the direction we want to go, like I, I wouldn't have any heartburn about not including those in toolbox. If there's discomfort from you all and having them is even an idea, they're just, there are, they are things that have been implemented in places. They have an effect. So there, there are tools that exist, but if we just don't think that they fit in Carbondale, it's, it would be fine with us if they were not in here.
Okay. Were there any others that you put in the toolbox because you heard them from the community, but from your expert, you know, opinion and, and expertise as a planner and all that? And Jared and Kevin, I'd love to hear from you as well. But is there anything else that you'd say, that's just not really best practice or that's bad planning? Because I want to make sure that this is informed by the community, but the, you know, neighbors aren't necessarily experts in what really works. And so I want to make sure that the things in here are things that we can say, yeah, these work, let's consider where to implement them.
Yeah, I, I don't think, I think at one point, I, I'm pretty sure we took this out. I think at one point we had one about, um, you know, like flags. Yeah, I, I think you've probably seen them in like downtowns and other communities where at a crosswalk, there's not like a flashing beacon. It's just, there's a flag that's in the sign that you're supposed to grab and walk across the street that I, I think we had one in here at one point, but those, like, that's definitely not best practice that, that's, I don't think those were effective. So.
Okay.
Those, but I, yeah, I don't believe anything else in here was at that level. We don't actually think it makes sense.
Okay. Is there anything Kevin or Jared that you would be concerned about having in here as kind of, these are our strategies?
Uh, you know, I would be supportive of, there's a difference between speed humps and speed bumps. You know, speed bumps are, they've been tried in town before and we've gotten direction to put them in. And one time it was less than three months, we took them out because they had unintended consequences of noise and things like that. Um, I think speed tables, properly designed speed humps can work. Speed bumps don't typically work that well with our plowing operation because they're much more abrupt where the other two can be designed to work with our plows, um, particularly when we're putting a lot of the snow in town in the middle of the street. You know, you, you not only think about how do you get it lined up there, but then how do you take the snow blower and clean it up? So, i- if we need to clarify that, that the speed hump, speed tables need to be designed to accommodate plowing, I would be comfortable leaving those in.
Okay.
As far as the one-way street, I, I'd say direction from you guys would be great one way or another.
Okay.
You're right. There's nothing in this plan that says, okay, let's take a gridded section of town like downtown and make the street one way and this one the other way. So.
Okay. Well, we can come back to it. I just wanted to answer those questions and see, uh, did you have anything else on that, Jared? As far as the, do you stand behind the toolbox?
Yeah, I think the toolbox is, um, a great list and, and I really think that tactical urbanism will really help the community at large, kind of maybe understand what some of these are in a real world application. So, you know, I, although I may personally question the effectiveness of some of these, you know, I think having them in there would be really helpful because at least we have that ability to test it. Like, uh, you know, some of the mini roundabout concepts, is that really something that's going to be effective in Carbondale, given the community? So, you know, um, I don't have any hesitation with keeping, um, all of those tools in and, and echo Kevin's comments on the one-way street.
Okay, great. Any other questions for now before we hear from everybody else?
Yeah, just while we're on that topic, um, a little vote, a vote for speed tables, I have, have, having lived on Cemetery Lane in Aspen before and after, they did two things, both put some curves in, narrowed it and put in a bunch of speed tables, which apparently are, I mean, I don't know, maybe you know more than I do whether they're a real pain in the butt to, to plow or not. They seem to be okay. And it, it has the, it has the effect of slowing people down. So definitely a different story than a three foot wide or five foot five bump, but a, but a speed table. And that seems to have really made that a, a slow speed, um, thoroughfare, which I think is there, was their whole point. That's multimodal, a real success, I think. And then just back to the toolbox, et cetera, or the toolbox itself. Um, so I sort of saw that as probably not much different than the same packet you put together for most towns that you work with. Like, I mean, that's, which, which is great. Um, you know, not necessarily tailored, not necessarily tailored to Carbondale there, but it's a, a real good rundown in a sense, a bit of a, a primer for, for us and for the public for whom this is really in, intended, um, as a document. So I, so after sort of being like, hey, wait a second, they could have put this together for anybody. My, my second thought was if we've got these things, I would appreciate more examples of, I mean, you kind of have to, for example, the traffic circle, which is apparently going to come real close to my, my corner. You know, I would love to see a couple of examples of, of how that works. Cause I think people have their own ideas of what a tra, traffic circle looks like and it may be four times the size of what we, what you see here, if you look really closely. But I would love to, I think, have some more examples in here so people don't have to go to kind of go chase them down. Just a couple of thoughts. If we're doing, if we're doing a boilerplate section, more boilerplate, more, more options of, of, of looking at it, it'd be great.
Okay. And we'll come back to all of our recommendations. I just, I want to make sure we get to the public after we've gotten our questions clarified. Chris, did you have any more clarifying questions?
No, I can comment later.
Let's, uh, let's hear from the commission. I see lots of commission members here. Thank you for being here and thank you for all the, thank you for all the work that went into this. And, um, we got your letter, um, and your, um, your recommendations on some next steps. And we really appreciate already thinking about what's next.
We're going, we have a presentation, but before we do that, I wanted to address the one-way street issue because I think that came.
Can you introduce yourself first?
I'm Rick Blaveld. I'm on the Bike Pet Trails Commission. Yeah, thank you. I think the one-way street issue had a very specific context and that was something we recommended numerous times. And that was related to feedback that we heard from the community about re, sort of restructuring the main street downtown core. There are people in this community would like to see a walking mall, you know, like it is on First Friday. Sometimes it's closed off permanently. We realized from, I talked to several of you about that, that's probably not realistic. We, we get pushed back from retail businesses downtown. So one of the other options that we've heard was what if it was a, there was kind of a one-way street arrangement downtown? The purpose of that would be to have more cafe space, to have more bike lanes. So we're not talking about an opportunity for traffic to speed up. That was the context that we offered this idea about one-way streets. So I just wanted to clarify that because I think, you, you know, we, we tried various ways to, um, in various, um, drafts to express that. And I, I, I think it was misinterpreted.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks.
Hi guys, I'm Matt Orick, um, also chair of Bike Ped Commission and uh, I think I'm here Uh, tonight in that role. I I had no idea one way streets would be such a big issue. But I I guess I feel compelled to open up with a comment on one way streets. Um, Uh, yeah, as Rick said, we were the ones that sort of requested that and we had a conversation with Matthew that You you guys just experienced with those pros and cons. And I, you know, I think we looked at the toolbox as not These are things that are gonna happen. You know, we we looked at it as these things are might happen. We don't know what Problems or what situations we're going to run into and try to solve in the future. And this seemed like a legitimate tool, especially for a community that's, um, You know, trying to find space for bikes and people. And, um, you know, I think if we found out a few years ago on, on, um, On eighth, if you're It's really difficult to squeeze bike lanes and separate cars and people with, without addressing traffic patterns. So, you know, I would encourage you to leave it in just, just for that, just for a future, maybe. Um, Let me just give you, I just have a few minutes. Um, and I just want to give you a little context. You know, I think the Bike Ped started working on this in two thousand and two. Coming out of the, um, the comp plan update.
Twenty twenty two.
What's that?
Twenty twenty two.
Twenty twenty two, okay. Yeah, I said two thousand and two.
Yeah, that's it.
Um, well, I was alive and, um, the, um, The, uh, you, you know, at first I think we, we, we came in front of the trustees to Make the pitch that we should get a plan and I, and it wasn't A no brainer. I mean, it was not unanimous consent that we should have. Um, and we were, we're pulling out recommendations that came out of comp plan update. And, um, but you guys said, let's move forward. We then I think end of two thousand and two, end of two thousand and twenty, twenty three, uh, worked on the RFP. Um, and again, we, we were, we did a lot of work on researching other towns, other communities, What they had in transportation plans and try to incorporate that to the RFP. And we also again Pulled out of the comp plan update. The comp plan update said, go get a transportation plan, make it have a long term vision. And consider things like the growth your community's dealing with. And I think that was one of the main themes that we were sort of pushing was Carbondale's changing and it's going to keep changing and you can either be proactive And try to position yourself so you can maintain the environment we all enjoy, or you can just sort of let it happen. And, um, that's what we were hoping to get in front of with this plan. And, um, So, yeah, there's some, there's some good stuff in this plan and I, I, you know, I, I think we can use it as we move on. I think And you know, that's a context, I think, for the letter that we sent to you guys. And, um, You know, just read those real quick. I, I think, you know, as we move into the next phase, we have to think about what that looks like. And and for us, uh, I think we have to take the information that we have in MAP And and develop an implementation plan. I mean, What are the objectives we want to go after first? What are the priorities the community wants? Um, and and figure out how to phase it and scale it over the years and with budgets. And, um, I think we need a little more work rounding out the, the project list. You know, I think the project list is great, I as far as it went, but we continue to hear issues From, you know, other people in town who maybe weren't, you know, isn't, you know, involved in the survey. And, you know, we, we hear things, real concerns about A three, we hear concerns about, you know, industry and the speeding going by the dog park. So we think it's worth, um, you know, given that we have a limited time, resources, money To make sure that as we start putting shovels in the ground, we understand why we're doing it. And it's the place where we get the most bang for the buck. And, um, The, uh, other one is, uh, uh, just taking a, a Again, kind of taking a look at these long term vision issues, sort of as Chris mentioned, you know, You know, what do we do in north of downtown's developed? Should be thinking about that now. When and what are the circumstances we put in history way through? I think, I think the transit plan should include those kind of thoughts. Even if we're not solving those problems, we're thinking about them and we're letting the town know we're thinking about them. And, um, the last one on this was, uh, in the comp plan and also in Matthew's report that, um, we should adopt the complete streets policy. Because we think it, it really gives direction to every phase of executing a plan. Um, and it's become sort of a standard in a lot of communities. It's become a gating issue in many ways for obtaining grants. And, um, Uh, bike, uh, some people from the Bike Ped worked with age friendly Carbondale and we drafted a resolution that If you guys want, want to consider that step, um, we're happy to get it on the agenda and try to present that to you soon, sooner rather than later. So, you know, that's really the pitch and the context of the letter we sent you. And, um, I know Rick has some comments, I think, on sort of long term vision and strategies, uh, turn it over to him. But If you have any questions, uh, elaboration or clarification on those points, I'm happy to take those as well. Okay.
Thanks. Once again, Rick Blaveld. I'm on the Bike Ped Trails Commission. I've, uh, been on for two years and Since day one, we've been working on, uh, our, our contributions to this, this project, this map project. I just wanted to share with you from my perspective, um, so how, how we sort of came to our, um, Our expect, you know, our informed expectations about what we, what we'd wanted to see from MAP. Um, you know, we started two years ago. I guess it was December of twenty twenty two and we did a survey, um, of other communities. I think Matt referenced that. We did a pretty extensive survey of other communities and other plans around the country. And one of the things that really I think that came out of that, that was really exciting to us was this inverted pyramid priority Triangle, um, sort of thing. And it, it positioned, this was, this was from, um, Uh, Arlington, Massachusetts. And this was a way that they expressed their vision for their plan. And it was a, it was a order of priority that Everything that they did, transportation development had to conform to. So top on that list Is, you know, pedestrian accessibility. The second item is, is bicycles. The third item is transit. And notably, the last item is single occupancy vehicles. So, you know, that was, that was one of the first things we came across and that was exciting to us. And we thought, wow, if we could, If we could pull that off in Carbondale, we'd accomplish something. And I think there was some excitement about that. Um, and then we, we took a look at the comprehensive plan that had just been updated in twenty twenty two. And the language, you know, the first thing that you read in the, in the mobility section is Prepare a plan that creates a long term vision based on community outreach forecasting for future growth and comprehensive analysis. So that, you know, that was a pretty high level vision for us, um, future growth forecasting and And really, really comprehensive analysis of of need and and long term vision. From there, um, Kevin and and Jared gave us an opportunity to contribute to the RFP with some of these, this, this narrative that we were developing. And we really appreciated that. And as a result, the, um, RFP said things like Position Carbondale as a model community, um, support the town's vision as a pedestrian And bike friendly community and prepare a framework to communicate and consistently honor that vision. So again, um, high level visioning and long term planning, this, 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 this narrative that we were developing. So from there we went into twenty twenty three in the summer and that was, uh, the time when Um, FHU had, uh, been reaching out to the community with their, um, survey to identify locations in town where the pinpoint locations in town where there were issues. And, um, highway one thirty three was being, um, Handled by, um, H Friendly. And so there were two servings going on, surveys going on. The Bike Ped Commission made an effort to attend Regularly the, the booth at the farmer's market, the town had set up to talk about MAP. And, and we decided, I think To really, when we were talking to folks, encouraging, encouraging them to Complete the survey, but also trying to really Get some discussion about a higher level, more, more macro view of Carbondale. What is it about the big picture? What is it about Carbondale's culture, infrastructure, mobility that really excites you? What are, what are the problems? And it was interesting because I think we heard two distinctive, um, answers Over and over again. And I talked, I know personally, I talked in dozens of people. One was Man, I just got here last year. This place is awesome. Don't change a thing. And the other, the other response we got over and over again, typically from someone who'd been here a longer period of time was Wow, it used to be awesome. We're losing that. It's going away. You know, we, it's too late. There's too much traffic. There's too much development. I'm mad about that. Don't talk to me. And so, you know, obviously we, we, we had conversations to, um, To gain some trust in what we were trying to achieve. But I think it, I think what we learned from that was they were telling us the same thing. We really care about this kind of vision for Carbondale, about this access To town through bike, ped, safe, safe streets for our kids. And this is important. And so we felt like we had a mandate. Um, and, and the mandate was really was for a big vision, long term commitment to this kind of vision. So, um, I think as we saw drafts, we, we felt like as our, as the voice of the community, the people that we've been talking with, We needed to, to push back a little bit, you know, the, the plan had great ideas for projects, action plans for Things that were pinpointed as problem areas in town. And but we felt like we wanted more Direction on how to move this project forward into sort of future planning, how to connect now to what we might want to do five years from now. Um, how to, how to project future growth. And, and, you know, I think we sometimes were a little harsh in our criticism and I apologize for that. But Again, I think we were trying to represent the feelings of, of the, the community. So where we are today, I think is that As Matt, as Matthew has, has pointed out, and as we've heard from all of you and Matt has pointed out, we, we have a, I think a good nucleus of a plan. We think the toolbox is excellent. There's all kinds of good opportunities there to apply that toolbox to challenges in town. There are, um, there's a great action, list of action items. There are, there's a great list of projects, but what we're missing is we don't know where to start. Where do we start with this? How do we, where's the implementation plan? I think a lot of these things are mentioned in the map plan In, in broad terms, but we're at a loss for what needs to happen next. And I think that's why we have that, those four items in front of you. The hard stuff. How do we make changes in the development approval process? We can't do this Vision without changes in the development approval process. We can't, and and changes in what we require of developers. We don't know really where to start with an implementation plan and how to sort of build, build immediate needs In, in consideration of future needs and where, where do we start and how do we link all those things? How do we Integrate projects today with projects that may happen four or five years from now. And so how do we set design standards? How do we Set measurements and and evaluation plans? And so I think that's what we're getting at. We, we don't feel it's quite Finished. It's a great nucleus and and maybe that's something now we have to do as a group. Let's figure out how we move forward from here in an effective way so that, um, This doesn't sit on the shelf. This gets done and this stays in the forefront for many years to come. So with that, I leave it to you. Good luck. Thanks for, no, just kidding. Uh, we, we want to help. But we need some guidance, I think, and we, we hope that there's a way forward to, uh, make this plan a little different and with the visioning that we've, we've all done and believe in. Thanks.
Thank you, Rick. Thanks for all your time on this. Anybody else from the commission before we hear from others? Okay. Anybody else want to address the board on this plan? Come on, come on up.
So, um, I apologize not sending something from H Friendly, but We, I, Ron and I were going out of town and we did not have another meeting before this meeting. So, um, I just have a couple of
Can you just introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry. Nikki Delson, H Friendly, Carbondale.
Thank you, Nikki.
Um, so I hope that, I, I really appreciate that you've really fleshed out complete streets Because I, I think that that really would provide an overarching umbrella to pull all of this together And how you move forward. Um, we don't have a transportation department. So who is accountable? How will that all work? That's the kind of thing that, um, complete streets looks at. And how will decisions get made? And some of the questions, I'm, I'm going to be really brief. Some of the questions that we've received since we've Did the one thirty three project. And so people send us, you know, pictures of problem areas and things. So some of the questions that we've received are what criteria are going to be used to prioritize the action items? And how will, how will we go about doing that? Who's gonna, is it going to be, um, another group that's going to be created? A community collaborative group of lots of people from different organizations creating the priorities? Is the priority going to be safety? Is the priority going to be the environment? Which demographic is going to have priority? Is it going to be Children? Is it going to be older adults? Is it going to be folks with my mobility issues? Those things. When people ask us questions, they call and say, who should I go to? Because we don't have a transportation department, we don't know who's accountable and how those decisions are going to get made. And I think that's really important because if you look at the comp plan, The idea of complete streets is mentioned in the comp plan. And here we are again mentioning it. So I really hope that the board will consider having A meeting just where we could flesh out for you what that looks like. Um, and some of the other things that have been mentioned or people have asked Um, is I'm glad you brought it up then because I was there when we created the priority corridors and it was really a rush kind of thing. And I think it's very important that we distinguish what's safe for nighttime because at that meeting, Even though the Rio Grande Trail is listed as a priority corridor, it is not a safe nighttime corridor. Um, so new people coming to the town should understand what the priority corridors are. And even in this plan, we don't have it really clarified. I mean, is it a way for wayfinding? And then what are we trying to find? So people have asked us, um, To tell them more about what priority corridors are. And they say, should, should we, some of the things that have been suggested is Um, a map of Carbondale that overlays many different kinds of things. So we have the priority corridors, whatever we decide, the new priority corridors or the old or some combination or just Start all over again. But the map should also include the safe routes to school so that you see It's like a layered kind of thing. And, um, people have suggested that also on those Um, corridors should be a list of where the school bus stops are Because that really affects traffic flow when, um, when there's school bus and where, um, The transit and bus stops are also. So one kind of overlay map that'll list all of it. Um, so I'm not gonna, I meant Matt did a really good job of fleshing out complete streets. I really Request that the board take a big look at that because I think it'll help The, the town, um, make some decisions about how you prioritize and what gets prioritized. And who's going to be accountable for what happens next. Thank you.
Thanks, Nikki. Anyone else like to address the board on the mobility access plan? Okay, anybody online waiting to Share their thoughts? If you're online and you want to address us on this, just raise your zoom hand, please. Okay, um, I'd love for, to hear from staff and then, um, bring it back to the board, but just on any of the comments that you've heard that you'd Like to respond to and especially on kind of what you think next steps might look like. And I think from Lauren, Kevin, Jared, kind of the, these questions about, yeah, how do we operationalize this? Um, assuming that we approve this this evening, maybe with some minor changes, maybe just as is, um, The Bike Ped Trails Commission has four things that they're recommending. Um, I'm imagining that that's probably some of their work and and some of staff's work, but maybe just tell us what you feel like is next after adoption of this plan. And and what roles staff, board, commission might play in those. Whoever wants to.
I would see this kind of moving forward in two prongs. I, I do agree that there is a need to Be, I would say proactive by Taking some of the information that's in MAP and how are we going to apply that to future development? I think there's also a path on this side of Let's figure out what projects on that list. And, and I think they were intentionally Not prioritized for the simple fact that the for the simple fact that the community needs to prioritize those things. I don't think it needs to be a lengthy process. I mean, we've got, it's interesting when you go through these plans. From my engineering brain, I would have loved to have said, stop doing everything until we get this plan done. But we've moved forward with some of the things that are even recommended in this plan. So, I think those are fine things to do. But I do think, taking a look at maybe 2026 and beyond, okay, here's this list of projects. How are we going to prioritize? And I think that's going to take it from the community. Does that mean we need to spend another year getting that? I, one of the things we threw out at the last Bike Ped Commission meeting was, you know, could we get like one member from the Bike, one or two from the Bike Ped Commission, one or two from P&amp;Z, one or two from Park and Rec? And use those instead of going back out with, you know, surveys to kind of prioritize that, bring it to you guys, give the public an opportunity to talk about it, and then start implementing it. So, I don't know if that answers your question, but-
Yeah, that helps. Anything else, Jared or Lauren, on just what you feel like is next steps? And what's the role of staff? What's the role of the commission? What's the role of this board? Because my sense is that people want a sense of, if we adopt this, that we don't feel like we're done, and we know what some next steps are. So I want to make sure people leave feeling that we've heard that.
Yeah, I would definitely agree with the sentiment about adopting a Complete Streets policy, taking those steps. I think that's very helpful within the development review process when you have those types of policies to ask developments every time how they are complying with that, how they're building towards that. And so, I think that's a really powerful piece of kind of action that the town can take as a whole that would help, you know, from that side that Kevin's talking to, which is more of the planner side. You know, there are some items in there, you know, related to the development review process where, you know, we can start to flesh out some of the details about, you know, how we get certain boards or groups involved in more active development review processes. Is that the right approach? Is that too long of an approach? But, you know, that's conversations that we can have. So I would say those are some of the next steps that I see on that kind of process side. But I would fully support Complete Streets policy moving forward in some way, shape, or form.
You think between staff and the Bike Ped Trails Commission, do you have the capacity to take that on and flesh it out and bring it to us? Or is that?
Yeah, I think there's a lot of work staff, Bike Ped Trail, Planning, Zoning Commission can probably do on those policies. There's a lot of templates out there. Maybe it's what Kevin said. It's some of those joint commission groups that are kind of working as an ad hoc committee to help flesh out some of those ideas. But, yeah, I do think that's something that the boards and commissions can kind of work on and then bring something back, get feedback. And you have to go back and forth a few times, so be it. But, yeah.
Okay. I just want to be careful that, you know, we've set priorities. We've tried to stay focused on certain things. We know we have limited staff and limited time and all that. And so, I don't want everybody to feel overwhelmed by this, but just trying to get some clarity on what next steps might look like. Let's hear from Lauren, and then I hear, I see Colin and Erica. I just want to really let staff respond to this. Like, staff is on the operational side, right? So we approve big plans, and then we step back and we hope that things come to us to keep approving. But these folks here have to keep it moving forward and support our volunteer boards and commissions.
Well, you know, I certainly agree with Jared and Kevin. And thank you, Nikki, for talking about Complete Streets. We don't have a transportation department. But that function is taken care of by a combination of our planning and our Public Works Department since that's the planning and the streets piece of our staff and how we do things, which I know you're well aware. I do want to caution the board. Yes, we can work on this, and staff can work on this with Bike Ped Trails. But it's, you're going to need to decide where you want that to be in the priority list of what staff is currently being taxed with. And also, I will be interested in, when we have this conversation and when you're conversing among yourselves, there are some pieces of this that are already, there are already processes in the works. Part of that will happen with your Highway 133 exploration. We've already got some ideas of, you know, when Jess brought up how much things cost, some ideas about priorities that have been stated both by the public and by the board and staff of what kinds of transportation things, whether they're transit things or whether they're roads things, are, at the current moment, priorities over the next few years and what they are likely to cost. And also keeping in mind how long it takes to actually accomplish these things from setting it as a priority to putting a plan in place to figuring out how to fund it. So, I just would like to be this Tuesday evening's reality check.
Thank you. Erica, and then Colin.
I think I'm just going to build on that response a little bit because I think one of the other useful tools for this is if Public Works is working on sewer line change in a street, and it happens to be one of these intersections, like, it could be an opportunity that Kevin could come to us and say, hey, this could be a really good time to implement whatever this project is on this line. And so, it could be just an ongoing kind of reference tool for staff. So it's a, even though it feels like maybe there's not like specific implementation on it, it can still be really helpful in using, for just incorporating, I guess, into existing projects. And I think the other part is, I would be hesitant for us to put together like a full detailed implementation plan if we don't have a, like, capital improvement budget line item. Like, right now, we fund all of this stuff from our general fund. So just as a reminder, and a reminder to Bike Ped Trails Commission, you know, this right now, we incorporate like pretty, I mean, big sections of our budget, but it just has to be part of our general fund. But we do have an opportunity in 2026, in April, we could go to the voters and ask for a bond. And then we would start to have, this would be really powerful because we could say, hey, we've got these projects that we want to get done. Here's what they would cost. Here's what we need. And I just, so that's where this also becomes really important for us to use for going forward if we feel like we need to go to the voters and ask for either a tax of some kind or a bond or whatever that might look like. So I don't feel like this will just sit on a shelf. It's the first time we've had one. And so I think there's a lot of ways this can be incorporated without having to go into mapping out how we would pay for all of it. And I will say, I was, I did have, I was optimistic, shocking, that we would be able to fund, you know, maybe go to our congressional delegation and ask for allocations. But I've put that on hold in my wish list and dreams. But it doesn't mean that we can't figure out how to raise that money ourselves. And we do have that opportunity in April 2026.
Thanks, Erica. Colin?
I was just going to respond generally to Bike Ped. I think you guys have done a great job pushing, pushing the consultant, pushing the staff on a wide range of ideas. And I really appreciate all the time and effort for you doing that. So this year is the 100-year anniversary of the city of Los Angeles adopting an ordinance that prioritized cars over people on the streets. And we have been living with that and the outcome. So everybody else quickly adopted it because traffic started going faster because you kept all those pedestrians off your streets. And we've lived with the consequences of that change in philosophy about how our streets should operate. They used to be very multimodal, very cross-purpose, at very low speeds. And now, we're at high-speed, single-use. And to change that is no easy task. So I appreciate all the work that you guys have done. I appreciate all the work that staff has done and our consultant team to kind of raise this issue. It's not going to happen quickly. We also have a very small budget, and it's going to take some time. But I think this is a great start. We've got lots of great stuff in here. And at the same time, we're moving forward on some other projects related to 133 transit. So, I'm just so grateful for everybody putting so much time and effort into this topic because it's about the livability of our community, and it's really, really important. But it's going to be incredibly frustrating because it's not going to go as fast as we want it to. And, but thank you all for your efforts.
Right, thanks, Colin. I mean, with that, I think it's time for us to bring it back. And do we have any concerns about adoption? Are there any changes that you'd like to see before adoption? I would hate to see us spend all this time and money and resources and energy on a plan and then say we don't want to adopt it. So I'm assuming we're going to adopt this thing with or without any changes. And I appreciate all that discussion about next steps. And I appreciate the Bike Ped Trails commitment to these, you know, things for next steps. And I think we're giving some feedback and thinking through. Do we, do they really need to spend time prioritizing these? Or I think that's going to be part of the capital improvement plan. That'll be a process of prioritizing. I think Erica is right. Colin's mentioned it. I think we're probably headed toward a tax question and a bond a year and a half from now to start to say to the community, we say we want to get all these things done, not just for this, but we say we want to do housing, we say we want to do a roundabout, we say we want to do all these crossings and all these infrastructure improvements. Are we willing to pay for it? And so that is going to be an effort of very, you know, detailed prioritization to kind of put together a project plan if we decide to go that way. But I'm glad to hear that that's what a lot of us are thinking. And I think we'll probably continue to talk about those things. Next week, we're going to look at Highway 133. A few weeks later, we're having a work session on municipal finance. So the pieces are starting to come together for a let's-get-it-done type of approach. So, but it sounds like there's support for a Complete Streets plan, given staff capacity and board priorities. And that guiding vision, it sounds like those are kind of number three and four in the letter from the commission are kind of similar there, the Complete Streets and the guiding vision. So I think we can move on all those. But any concerns from the board before we consider adoption? Anything you'd like to see changed about the plan? That's reluctant, yes.
Are you going to derail us all?
A hundred times. So, you know, listen, I think the Bike Ped Commission is willing to continue to work on this. I think we're confident we can work with staff to keep pushing these things forward. I think we got to figure out a way to have a little better communication. I think, as a lot of you guys made sense, I think there was a lot of frustration from the commission on how this process went. And I think we're lucky and sort of jump in and start pushing ideas that there's not an audience for. So I just want to say that. And, yeah, that's it. Thank you. Thank you. And how I'm seeing this might be a little bit different from how the commission sees it. But how I see it is, we adopt this plan as is. It's a, don't let the perfect be the enemy of the good type of moment in my mind. And then, we keep doing all that other work to keep building on it and implementing it. But I don't think that there's any reason to wait to adopt the plan in order to get all that done. There's always going to be more work to do. So I'm very comfortable with this plan. I'm not going to pull out the speed humps or the one-way streets. I was just asking the questions. And I do want to be cognizant if somebody comes to us and says, see, it says speed humps in here. We need speed humps on the block from here to here that happens to be right in front of my house. That's not how that's to be interpreted or any other project in there for that matter. But we've never had a plan like this before. And in my time, when Nikki and I were on the Bike Ped Trails Commission together and Matt for a while, it was hard. We didn't have guidance. And we were kind of coming up with projects. And Kevin would say, I heard this needs to be done. And, you know, a squeaky wheel in the community would really start to direct us on what our project list was. So I think this is a huge step forward. And with all the other things we've talked about, I think we're going to be in good shape. So I'm ready to go. But I'm totally open to anybody else's suggestions if you think there's more work needs to be done or any specific changes you'd like to see before. Yeah, Russ?
Could, could we include, as requested, at least this Bike Ped letter in, like, make sure that it is part of the Carbondale, or add it to the addendum? I would actually really like that. It's something we've talked about before recently in terms of making sure that, that concerns or even discussion from our various commissions makes it into final product so that existing concerns are thrown alongside the document itself. And I, because I don't think this is, I don't think this is a criticism. This is, this is things that they are suggesting we do, that we do. And it becomes sort of a bit of a comment sort of after the fact as opposed to all the public comment sort of before the fact. I would be happy to add the BPTC recommendations for final map draft as a, maybe we don't, I guess, we're not necessarily incorporating them into that, but we are including that suggestion as something that becomes part of the document.
Another appendix.
Another, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, addendum, appendix. I don't have any, I don't think there's any reason not to include that in there, if possible.
In the, like, public comment section?
Yeah, in the public comment section, yeah. It's dated, so, you know, and it, we can just make sure that it's in there. I think that, I would feel better about that.
Staff, have any thoughts about that? Or board members?
I would just say that if we're going to include that one, we should also include the P&amp;Z letter.
Yes, oh, yeah.
Okay, so this could be included as public comments in that section?
If we're going to include one, we should include the other. I don't know how I feel about including them, but I don't think we should just do one.
Agreed.
Just in public comment, then it doesn't become a binding part of the plan, correct, Mark?
I don't think anything's binding in this plan. I mean, this is just a guiding document. Yes, Lauren?
We were just talking about whether or not the Bike Ped Trails letter and the P&amp;Z letter, whether there was any problem in putting them into the plan as, in the same section as public comments.
I think that'd be fine.
Thank you.
Anybody want to speak about that, for or against? Are you okay with that? I think in the public comment section makes sense. Okay, anything else?
I'm willing to go forward with it. I think it's fine. I think Matthew also, you know, made it clear that the priority list is, or that that is the area where is sort of implicitly open to being reviewed every year, pretty much. So I think, yeah, we're not locking the door and throwing the key away. It's like, it's living document. And I hope it is editable. I mean, I don't know, but we get an editable version of it.
We do.
And that too, yeah.
Okay, anything else before somebody might make a motion to approve?
I would just say, would you be comfortable with us updating those costs like Jess brought up and making the edits?
You bet. Thank you.
Putting that letter in the public comment section? Yep, and any other, you know, minor edits that you find that don't change the substance? I think we're comfortable with. Okay.
Well, I'd move to approve Resolution 1 Series of 2025 adopting the Carbondale Mobility and Access Plan.
Second.
Motion by Colin, second by Erica. Any discussion or questions before we vote? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? All right, motion passes unanimously. Thank you to the commission, to the consultant, Matthew, for all of your work. We hope you'll come back and work with us one day. We know that this was a trying process. And to staff for all that went into this. With that, next week is a special work session on the Highway 133 plan. So we're going to be standing around a table. It's going to be a very board-focused session. It's not going to be a big public, open house where everybody's going to be engaged in the conversation. We need to be able to ask questions, engage with staff, engage with CDOT. Other people can listen, and if we have time, we'll take some questions. But we've worked on a format that we think will get us there. We're going to have, what, nine-foot-long maps, is that right? Nine-foot-long maps.
Sweet.
That will be fun.